Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for November 20th, 2018. Item number one, if we could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, just to draw your attention to the fact that we have an updated 4A3 in front of you, which basically just modifies the route of the Christmas Parade, as opposed to going from fourth to first, it'll be to third and first. Other than that, nothing further.
All right. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, or as modified.
Counselor Mokel?
Second.
Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to consent agenda. Counselor Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, I would offer item 10A1 to move to consent.
Monthly financial review, 10A1. Counselor Luce?
I have a question on 4A3, so I'll ask it when it's on.
Remove 4A3?
Yes.
Counselor Lehman?
Remove 4A1.
4A1.
And then...
Counselor Lehman?
I'll move the amended consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce for the modified consent agenda. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for November 20th of 2018. 4A2 approves the minutes of the November 7th, 13th, and 20th, excuse me, November 7th and 13th, 2018 meetings. 4B1 adopts Resolution Number R2018-TAC-134, which approves the final plat of Ridge Creek, 3rd Edition. 4C1 declares property held by the Police Department as surplus and authorizes its proper sale or disposal. 4D1 approves the purchase of a Schwartz regenerative air street sweeper from Titan Machinery in an amount not to exceed $263,047. 4D2 authorizes the execution of a professional service agreement with SEH Incorporated for design and construction services for the 2019 sewer service lateral pipe rehabilitation project, Sewer TAC-19-TAC-003, and the 2019 cured and placed sewer pipelining project, Sewer TAC-19-TAC-006. 4D3 approves the 2018-2019 sidewalk and trail snow removal routes, and finally, 10A1 approves the monthly financial review.
The modified consent agenda has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. An item not on the agenda, if you could come forward, state your name and address for the record, on an item not on the agenda. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, welcome. William Strunk, 303 First Avenue West. I am wondering, what is our demolition dates for the properties that the city owns on that block? I saw a new sign today, so I just had to come in and ask.
Demolition date?
Yeah. So, I don't want any homeless people living in these old houses, in the garage, and, you know, whatnot. Since nobody else lives down there but me and Barb.
Mr. Reynolds, do we have a...
And he set dates for me?
I don't currently, Mr. Kurski, unless you're aware of something, I'm not.
Since I saw the sign.
We certainly, we can certainly get those dates to you, once we figure out what they're going to be.
I'd like really hard numbers and dates.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you so much. And to my 615 supporters, thank you. All right, good night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come forward and make comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, then, we will move forward. Item number six, business removed from consent, and we'll start with 4A2. Counselor Lehman?
4A1, Mr. Mayor.
Or 4A1, sorry.
4A1. Metro Cities 2019 Draft Legislative Policy Positions, there's a couple items in here that I'm strongly opposed to, so I took it off so that I can vote against it. Obviously, I've been opposed consistently for how many years, against the expansion of eminent domain for taking private property by force. I'm still adamantly opposed to that, especially for redevelopment. I'm also opposed to the expanded use of TIF. I actually would propose tightening up the use of TIF. And there's some other minor discrepancies that I disagree with, so I wanted to take it off and vote against it. I realize that we have a representative on this. I haven't contacted the representative because they're already there, and they know my position, so I'll just do my own lobbying.
Counselor Whiting?
No, correct me if I'm wrong, but the legislative positions have been already adopted, correct? This is just the policy?
They've been adopted by Metro Cities, or, excuse me, they've been adopted by the committees of Metro Cities, and what will happen then is that we, I'm actually on the Metro Cities Board, as you all know. What will happen is that after all of the individual 90-plus municipalities that have worked on these particular items have approved it, then it will come in for our vote at Metro Cities meeting, which is Thursday, November of 29th, and that's when they'll be approved in total. And one last point, if I could, I think it's incredibly important that whenever we have various disagreements, that we put those on the record, because frankly, we've been moving the, in the last couple of years, we've been moving some of these policies based upon those things over the last couple of years. My intent is to continue to do that. You know, obviously, Scott County has a different perspective than a lot of others in the metro area, and, you know, one of the benefits of being on the Board is to actually help somewhat relatively small steps, but to move those policies more in favor of those things that we hold dear.
Do I have a motion?
Yes. I make a motion to approve the recommended policy adoption from the Metro Cities Policy Adoption Study Committees, and I'll leave it at that, but I'll add to that.
Motion, second by Counselor Mokel. Discussion?
Just one point, Mr. Reynolds, if you could work with Mr. Lehman and understand his positions and bring them up when those discussions on those points are brought forward.
Yeah, absolutely. We've done that in the past, and both Counselor Luce and Counselor Lehman in the past have given some quite very good information, and all that stuff is reviewed, and that allows us actually to have some kind of a documentation to work off from, and it's actually pretty valuable in the process, so definitely.
Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you very much. Next item off of consent, 4A3. Counselor Luce?
Yeah, my question is, all but, excuse me, all of the businesses involved, except one, seem to be within the perimeter of the street closures. The one that's on Spencer Street seems to be a bit off of the parade route, and I'm just questioning how they're supposed to get from there to the parade route, where it says they can legally partake in alcohol drinks. There's a space in there of a block that's not included.
I think the public sidewalk, and there is a public space actually that we did with the public infrastructure improvements.
So, we're talking specifically about O'Brien's Pub?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, and, you know, for those that were there last year, you know, not only do we have that parking area that's available, but you also have the public space that the mayor had mentioned. That area, although not actually closed, that little roadway right off to the side, it was certainly being used, and I think that we can allow alcohol consumption in that whole area without closing it as part of the parade route.
I wasn't suggesting closing it, but I think it should be worded in here that we're allowing it, so we're covering ourselves.
Yeah, and we can certainly make that clear.
Counselor Lehman?
Just so I'm clear, so they're gonna go down the sidewalk on 101/1st, where Somerville is it, comes down and curves down to 101, or 61. They can use that sidewalk, or I suppose they could use the alley?
Right, and the alleys are also very...
And go west, and once they get to Somerville, and you're kind of away from the highway issue, and then you've got the old First Avenue.
Right.
Sidewalk.
And also keep in mind that with the new improvements that we did with that public space, they're actually removed from the highway by a large track of about 25 feet of vegetation, so that was designed specifically to kind of keep people away from that area.
Well, they'll be able to walk from there across Somerville.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Once they get to Somerville, they're on the parade route, though.
Right. So, really, the only area of any kind of impact would be Somerville, and is Somerville opener closed at 101?
Somerville at 101 is not closed, but it is open for transit of vehicle and people. It's not part of the parade route.
Okay. So, the only place that we're gonna have people that are drinking, drinking their hand, contacting cars, is at that crossing?
At that crossing, correct.
Counselor Whiting?
I think we've relaxed those rules over the years, and people have been pretty respectful, and it hasn't gotten out of hand. Now, that area is great for viewing the fireworks, which actually are changing this year, going off right at the Christmas lighting, so most people will be down by that Christmas tree when the fireworks go off. So, I know O'Brien's has some events going on, but I don't see that as as active a site as it has been in the past for viewing the fireworks, but it still could be, definitely.
Right.
Counselor Luce? I just think it should be worded in here that that section of sidewalk from Spencer to Somerville should be included in that route, so that, and the alley, if we're gonna allow that. So, just so that that's in the terminology, so we cover ourselves.
Put it into motion.
Yeah, we can certainly include that.
I'll try it.
Go ahead.
Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to authorize the requested street closure, suspension of City Code 114.11 in support of the Holiday Fest event hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, noting the street closures and open consumption of alcohol within the parade area and the street from O'Brien's on Spencer Street, 101, to the downtown area.
Along with the alley?
And the alley.
Okay. I have a motion on the table, second by Counselor Luce. Counselor Lehman?
I'd like to just offer a very friendly amendment to the motion. That would be that the motion is recognizing it's the revised version on the table.
Updated.
I accept that. That was very friendly of you, thank you.
So, okay with the second? So, the updated memo that's on the table, reducing it from fourth to third, first, and adding a sidewalk in the alley over by Somerville. Further discussion, discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving ahead to item number 7A, a public hearing for the 2018 street reconstruction. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Luce. Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, and staff will present.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. This is the assessment public hearing for the 2018 street reconstruction project. The project this year was Shakopee Avenue from Market Street to Marshall Road, as well as Dakota Street and Minnesota Street from 10th Avenue to Shakopee Avenue. A little project timeline and history for you. Council received a feasibility report in January of 2018. We had the project public hearing and ordering the project in February here in 2018. We went out for a public bid. The low bidder, which was awarded via council, was Northwest Asphalt in April. All summer long, we were under construction and wrapped things up in early October, and I stand before you tonight at the public hearing to adopt assessments. A little before and after photo for you. These are always good to sell, these projects. Vital that we keep up with our infrastructure. You can see from the before and after.
You didn't get that pothole where the car was in the pothole.
Long overdue project. So, as far as the assessments go, 30% of the street improvement costs are proposed to be assessed. We actually established two zones here, and I'd like to skip ahead a slide to show, maybe give you a little bit of background here. Everything that you're seeing in pink there is zoned, zone, single-family, R1C, and has a proposed land use of R1C. And all of those in green are either high-density residential zoning or current use, as well as institutional. So, we created kind of two different zones here. All the street front footage in front of those pink ones that you see was added up, and the cost divided amongst those lots, and we did the same thing with those high-density residential. So, we took the street frontage in front of those properties and divided those up instead of on a per-unit basis, like the residential, on a per-acre or lot area basis. There were some adjustments to the lots, so as you can see on this diagram, if it has a little star, that's a corner lot. So, for each side of that lot that faces the project, they're assessed a half a unit. And then, where you see the blue, these were contiguous, so that big one in the middle, for instance, is the Shakopee Elementary School. A portion of that would be assessed in the future off of 10th Avenue, so we kind of eliminated portions that we viewed as non-assessable. So, this is our assessment map for the project.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Those ones on the corners for the public, I'd like them to know that they're assessed half, because when Market Street or Minnesota Street get done, they'll get that other half eventually, or maybe already have paid for that.
Mayor and councilmembers, that is correct. We want to treat that as a single lot to pay one total assessment, the same as an interior lot or any other lot in town. So, each side of their lot pays a half on each street as we reconstruct or do other improvements to that lot. So, here are your actual project costs. So, feasibility, we are at about $2.462 million. Total project cost came in at $1.873. Of that, our funding sources, we're looking at roughly $274,000 in assessments. $279,000, that'll be paid for out of sanitary sewer fund. $199,000 out of storm sewer fund. Shakopee Public Utilities will be paying $480,000, and the remaining $640,000 would come out of capital improvement funds.
Quite a savings on the overall project, a little over $500,000.
Yeah, council and mayor and councilmembers, we would attribute a lot of that to getting our projects out for early bid. That's something that we've really been trying to do. You know, coming up with good projects, good estimates, you know, we build in a little bit of contingency, some soils corrections, because you just don't know, and the weather, things like that. So, we had favorable construction, favorable bids on this project, so we were able to deliver this on time and under budget. So, what this looks like, from the feasibility, we're proposing about a $5,500-$5,600 assessment. Our actual costs come in at about $3,732.54 for your standard residential lot, and that high-density residential and institution comes in around $6,652.41 per acre. The proposed payback period is 10 years, with an interest rate of 5.5%. So, a little loan amortization for you to see what that impact is, if somebody was to allow this to go onto their taxes, that initial principal of $3,700. If they let that go onto their taxes for 10 years at that interest rate, you're looking at just about $4,900 in total payback, so a little over $1,100 in interest. Their payment options. So, for the residents on this project, anybody can come in and pay in full, or a partial amount with no interest by December 20th, 2018, to the Finance Department. After that date, they'll be certified to the county property taxes, and then they'd be paid over a 10-year period with that 5.5% annum from the date the assessments are adopted. And anytime during that 10-year window, somebody can come in and pay off the remaining portion of that assessment, so there's no, and, yep, and not pay any additional interest. So, at this point, we have nobody that has stepped forward to appeal their assessments that we're aware of. Property owners wishing to preserve their right to appeal this assessment must file a written objection before the close of the public hearing tonight. These are the state statutes, the 429 for that, and that's kind of what I just summed up in that first one. The second little part there, they can appeal to the district court if they have some other hardship that they couldn't be here tonight or file. And so, our recommendation for you would be to adopt Resolution R2018-130, Resolution Adopting Assessments for the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project, CIF 18-003. I'd open it for any other additional questions you may have.
Questions of staff. Counselor Lehman?
The cost on this project came in roughly half a million less than projected. The end result assessments on a average residential lot, pretty close to what it was when my street was done probably six years ago. How long ago was your road done?
A couple, two years ago, well, three years ago. It's about the same.
Last year was about...
That's really, that's a good thing. I'd like to see this, like, continue. I don't know why, it's, it seems low, and that's a good thing. It's comparable to six years ago. Any comments on that?
Mayor, councilmembers, I would just say that, you know, over the years, hard lessons learned on a few things. You keep cleaning up specifications and contract language, get these projects out for bid early so that we get good competitive bids on these things. Just keep refining what, you know, the tools that we use to deliver these projects, and we've been very successful at that. So, last year, I think the assessments were a little over $4,000. Slightly larger lots, these were closer to 70-foot lots. Previous year was 85-foot lots. So, it kind of depends where we're at, but pretty consistent over the years, even if you adjust it for inflation.
Other questions or comments?
Any concerns or issues that you ran into? I know a couple times, we've run into lead pipes and things like that, feeding houses, anything like that this time?
You know, I would say that we didn't have, there's always unknowns when you start digging in the ground. We found a pipe that we didn't know was there. I think in our pre-exploration, we actually damaged somebody's sewer service doing our soil borings. You know, usually you have a car driving through the site that hits an obstacle or something, so there's those kinds of things. And then, I'd certainly say these projects are dusty and dirty, annoying, and really great on our residents' stress intolerance levels. We do everything we can to communicate to them, give them outlets to reach out to us, and make sure that we can make them whole or resolve their issues for them. So, it, nothing out of the ordinary this year. It sure did go pretty good.
Well, I know when you did our road a couple of years ago, you were always there, answered all the questions, and appreciate all the work you do for the residents on these projects.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I do have two more questions that's come to mind. The first is, this road was narrowed up like many other roads in Shakopee as we rebuild them. The Pearson School, which isn't currently in use, will that busing in the future, do you know? Would that narrower road be in the parking lot, or will it be on the street?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The city did approach the school district and asked them what they would like to do, and we actually reconstructed the same busing lane on the north side of the school district as what they've had in the past. We were able to give them that concrete kind of buffer waiting area where the students line up to get on the buses as well. So, we accommodated that, so that they have that for future use.
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, one thing I noticed when they were doing that, when they had, when they put the first level or layer of asphalt down, they put a tapered rubber donut around the manholes, which saved if somebody hit them, they would go up and over instead of crashing into them. You might want to look at putting that in our bids from now on, because I think that saved a lot of headaches for people, and it was nice. I mean, if you didn't see it, you just went over it. It wasn't much of a problem.
Mayor and councilmembers, that was something that was unique to this year's project, that the contractor elected to install at his choosing. You know, MUTC guidelines, you do need to mark obstacles like that in the roadway, so a lot of times, you'll just see a single cone with reflective. It serves a similar purpose. I like your idea. We'll explore that, and if that's something that's economically viable, we can absolutely add that to future projects.
Followed.
I think the council should look at some kind of a review that we get this, get the bids out earlier so we can take advantage of these lower prices. I mean, we saved over half a million dollars on this project. It's ridiculous not to take advantage of it, and if it's just a matter of getting the bids out earlier, you know, I guess staff might have to work a little harder, you know, earlier in the year, so they get them ready, and, you know, I know you guys can all do it. You've done it already, so.
Mayor and council, that's absolutely something that we're already doing, and we appreciate your support in approving those early starts for project funding, so that we can get surveying early and start doing that exploration, start that process. It's clearly a priority. I mean, any kind of savings that we can realize on these projects, that's a no-brainer. We have to, we have to chase that.
Further questions? Steve?
Mayor and councilmembers, good evening, and one thing I'd like to add would be, it's always a goal of ours not to have any change orders on a project, so it's a testament of good plans and good specifications, good communication, good working relationships with the contractor when you don't get change orders. And I, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we had a change order on this project, so that's a, that's a pretty high-level accomplishment. So, kudos to Ryan and team on that one as well.
Thank you. Thank you. This is a public hea... or do you have one more question, Counselor?
Well, not really a question. I just think that since Steve thinks that his staff did such a great job, I'm just wondering if Mr. Reynolds would be in agreement that some kind of a, an award of some sort of certificate to tell them that they did do a good job. I mean, everybody needs kudos when they do it right.
Well, we even have something better on the horizon. As of the last meeting of my leadership group on Monday, we have, we are moving forward with a manager of the year and employee of the year as well program. And I know that Steve has already put a couple people in for those awards, and I'm eagerly anticipating what we're going to have from other members of the staff. But I totally agree. I think that too often, we tend to overlook those that actually make the accomplishments happen, and it's been a priority of mine for some time to get this program started, and I'm delighted that it's moving forward as of Monday. So yes, we are definitely going to do that.
Mayor, is there a name tag in front of our city engineer over here? Okay, just in case people in the audience or at home don't know who we're talking about, we're talking about Steve Lilahogg is our city engineer who stepped into the conversation.
Thank you. This is a, thank you, Ryan. This is a public hearing. Anybody, any resident like to come forward and make comment on this reconstruction project that includes assessments? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Name is Thomas Gendrill. I'm speaking on behalf of my mother, Adeline Gendrill, 910 Minnesota Street, one of the corner lots. There's talk of deferment. She's a 93-year-old. My father died in January of this year, so she is, and I'm not sure if it's too late now to deal with the deferment of the payment, if that should have been filed already. I know according to the statutes, there's a possibility of that.
Mr. Mayor, it's not too late to file the deferment piece of that. They can work with us. If I can get your contact information and such like that, I can work with you on that. We do have a senior deferral piece in place, I believe, right, Steve? That'll defer the assessment, and it'll be, interest will still accrue on it, but it'll be deferred, and no payments will be due on it until the house is eventually sold or changes ownership or whatnot on that end of it. But it does still accrue interest, so it can add up over time on that end of it, but.
And if the other question was...
Can you speak into the mic?
Okay.
Thank you.
So if she did not pay up ahead of time before December 20th, if this deferment didn't work, would it just automatically go on to the taxes?
Yes. Unless you wrote a letter to appeal?
Yes, sir. Pending council approval, the adoption of the assessments and no payment before December 20th, that would go certified to the taxes, and it would be payable over the course of 10 years. I think I had a slide kind of showing the amortization of that.
Well, I just...
Just so you have an idea, I guess, of payments. So like your first year, there'd be about an annual payment of about $610 or $12.76, so about $50 a month.
Counselor Lehman?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question for our legal department. Being that there's only till the end of this meeting and when this is adopted, to write a letter of appeal, should this resident be writing this appeal to buy the time to work out a potential deferment?
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we have a couple of weeks to be able to help this gentleman and his mother out. I just confirmed that with Darren, so we're comfortable with that piece of it. Matter of fact, they're going to discuss it right now, and we can make that, we can make that happen.
All right. Mr. Gendrill?
Mr. Mayor and council members, if I may, I have a letter that will be going out to the residents pending your approval of this assessment, and it reads, under one of the sections on here, gives them their rights and also the payment options. And it says under Minnesota Statute, Section 435.1.193 to 435.195, "The council may in its discretion defer the payment of the special assessment for any homestead property owned by a person 65 years of age or older who is retired by virtue of permanent and total disability for whom it would be a hardship to make the payments. When deferment of the special assessment has been granted and is terminated for any reason provided in that law, all amounts accumulated plus applicable interest shall be due within 60 days of the termination of the deferment. Any assessed property owner meeting the requirements of this law and the ordinance adopted under it may, within 30 days of the confirmation of the assessment, apply to the city clerk on the prescribed form for such deferral of this payment, of this special assessment on his or her property." So they have a period of 30 days to work that out with the finance department.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, and I know we've only had one person speak, but if there is anybody else here who didn't speak but intends to appeal their assessment, you do have to submit in writing before this hearing is closed to the clerk a notice of intent to appeal. So if there's anybody here that, although not speaking, is thinking about doing that, that's a condition precedent to filing a court action. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that in cases.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd also just point out that that information was also provided to residents in another letter that we sent establishing the public hearing, and also talking about what they would need to do to appeal their assessment. So all the residents got direct mailings with all of that information as well.
Right. Thank you.
Mayor, if I can add one item, the city can approve a deferred assessment at any time. If we're five years into an assessment and we have a hardship like that, we can work with the resident, and they can ask you to amend your assessment, and it can be deferred at year five. So we have a lot of flexibility in that. I've done that before. So that's not necessarily something that needs to be appealed. That's just something that we would work. If they qualify, it can be deferred.
All right. Thank you for those clarifications on those, actually two different issues, but this is a public hearing. Anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this 2018 reconstruction project and assessments? Seeing none. Counselor Lehman?
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a second. Counselor Lewis to close the public hearing. Before I do, if you wanted to appeal this, you would need to have your letter here before the close of the public hearing, correct? Seeing none. I have a motion on the table to close the public hearing. A second. Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
I'll offer a resolution, R 218-130, adopting assessments for the 2018 Street Reconstruction Project, CIF number 18-003.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to 7B, public hearing for Shakopee Public Utilities, Shakopee Avenue Electric Undergrounding. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is open. Welcome back, Ryan.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the public hearing for special assessments for the SPUC Shakopee Avenue Electrical Undergrounding Project. This project was along Shakopee Avenue from Marshall Road to 11th Avenue, and it was to underground the power poles in the backyards of the properties on the north side of Shakopee Avenue from roughly Ramsey Street down to 11th Avenue. This was also a petition project, so we had at the initial public hearing, a petition, I believe, with 21 out of 30 or 31 signatures on that as well. Some timeline for you. City Council received a feasibility report in May of 2017. A public hearing was held and ordered the project in June of 2017. Construction was completed this spring, and we stand before you tonight with a public hearing to adopt the assessments. Some project costs for you. Shakopee Public Utilities had initially put together a feasibility estimate of $107,000, and the actual cost came in around $165,000. I can address that in a moment. The assessments are fixed, and it was $18,786, so the final assessments would be the same. So $146,127.17 would be funded by Shakopee Public Utilities. Essentially, the increase in cost, Shakopee Public Utilities initiated this project and asked council as, the city council, as the assessment authority to seek assessments for a portion of this project. They decided on their side to amend the scope, and they actually undergrounded a portion of electrical lines on the south side of Marshall Road, or of Shakopee Avenue from Marshall Road to about Ramsey Street. So that was the additional cost. 100% of that cost is being borne by Shakopee Public Utilities at their discretion, and the assessments remain unchanged. The assessment rate is $606 per lot, and this is equal to the 2017 undergrounding charge that Shakopee Public Utilities charges new residential developments for an electric service to an individual lot. So they wanted to compare moving those power lines at the residents' request. So $606 is the proposed payback, a shorter payback period of five years, and the proposed interest rate would be 5.5%. Here's that loan amortization for you. So you can see that that $606 of principal would turn into about approximately $711.55 if that stayed on their taxes for five years. So again, the options for payment on this, they can pay in full or a partial amount with no interest by December 20th, 2018, to the finance department. A notice will be mailed after this meeting to the residents. Assessments will be certified to county for property taxes and payable over five years with the interest rate of 5.5% annum from the date the assessments are adopted, and residents can certainly pay off any remaining special assessment at any time during that payment period. The assessment appeal procedure is for property owners wishing to preserve their right to appeal this, must file a written objection to the assessment prior to the close of the public hearing that we are at right now. Here are your Minnesota Statute, Chapter 429, rules on appealing the assessment for the residents. Leave that for a moment. And lastly, our recommendation from staff would be to adopt Resolution R 2018-131, a resolution adopting assessments for the SPUC Shakopee Avenue Electrical Undergrounding Project 2017-9. Are there any questions from council?
And the residents have all been notified with letters, just like the previous assessment
Yes.
On the utility aspect.
Yes, mayor and council members. Everybody has received notice of the public hearing with instructions as well.
Questions of staff? Questions of staff? If not, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody, resident, like to come forward and make comment on this electric undergrounding along Shakopee Avenue? This is a public hearing. Make comment on this project. Counselor Whiting?
Motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. Before we vote, remind residents that they have till the close of this public hearing to make a written request to appeal this assessment before the close of the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution R 2018-131, adopting assessments for the SPUC Shakopee Avenue Electric Undergrounding Project 2017-9.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lewis. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving ahead to 7C, the 2017 alley reconstruction. Ryan, or, excuse me, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I make a motion to open a public hearing.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Public hearing is now open. Ryan, welcome back.
Thank you, mayor and council members. This is the public hearing for special assessments for the 2017 alley reconstruction project. The city reconstructed an alley between First Avenue and Second Avenue and Lewis Street in Somerville. This was part of the EDA project for the downtown improvements. A little timeline for you. The city council received a feasibility report in April of 2017. Public hearing was held for the improvements, and council ordered the project in May of 2017. Low bids were, or bids were taken. Low bid went to RJM Construction. City Council awarded that in July of 2017. And just recently, street and utility construction was completed on those downtown improvements. And I stand before you tonight with the public hearing to adopt assessments. A little before and after picture for you of the downtown alley improvements. This would be standing kind of at the post office looking west. So project costs, the feasibility identified $120,000 for a project. Final construction cost for this project came in at $158,551.46. Couple things here for you. Assessments did go up, of course. City Council, in our feasibility estimate, staff had, the previous policy allowed for a 25% assessment rate. City Council directed staff to amend, and it has since been, the assessment policy has been amended to 30% for comparable to street reconstructions and other projects in a similar situation. So $47,550 is proposed to be assessed. $111,146 would go into the Storm, or be paid from the Storm Sewer funding. 30% of the project costs for the alley and storm sewer improvements are proposed to be assessed to the benefiting properties adjacent to the project area, and this is based on a front footage. Most of these lots were 60 feet or 30 feet based on subdivision. The city does have a couple lots along here as well. So that feasibility, front footage was about $50. We ended up at $79.25 per front foot. The proposed payback period is 10 years with a 5.5% interest rate. This is a loan amortization on a typical 60-foot lot. The principal would be that $4,755. 10 years of payments with that 5.5% interest would accumulate to $6,236.98. So payment options for this are the same. It can be paid in full or any partial amount over $100, I believe it is, with no interest by December 20th, 2018, to the finance department. Anything after that date would be certified to county property taxes and payable over 10 years, subject to the interest rate of 5.5% annum from the date the assessments are adopted. And a resident or business owner in this area can certainly pay off any remaining special assessments any time during that repayment period. Property owners wishing to preserve their right to appeal, do need to let us know here tonight before the close of the public hearing. These are the Minnesota Statute, Chapter 429, rules. And our staff recommendation for you would be to adopt Resolution R 2018-132, a resolution adopting assessments for the 2017 alley reconstruction project 2017-6. Any questions that staff may or council may have?
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I had a complaint from one of the property owners down there that the price has gone up three times on them, and I can understand the 25% to the 30%. What is the reasoning for the $38,551 increase from the feasibility?
If you don't mind, sir, I'd like to call Mr. Kurski with the planning department. He kind of helped run this project, and he can explain some of that for you.
Welcome.
Mayor and council, good evening. So the big issue was, it was just a rough estimate done. If you remember, we ended up bidding this project, I think, in June or July, so it goes back to council members, or Lewis's earlier point that if we had bid this early in the year, we ended up in cold winter conditions to finish this project, so it ran up the cost in the concrete.
Counselor Lewis?
The backside of the Domino's building where you had to go back and cut it out for the dumpster...
for the dumpsters, did the city eat that? Was that assessed or did the contractor eat that?
Mayor and council, the contractor ate that.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I just have one question. It's more of a curiosity question for staff. The city's portion of this assessment, which is the largest by far, is paid out of which fund?
There.
Stormwater fund.
If you may, mayor and council members, in the memo itself, I believe it states that, I have that as well here, that this would be paid for, out of the Economic Development Authority Downtown Improvement Fund for the city portion of assessments.
Of the assessment, not the city portion of the stormwater 70%.
Yep. And the 70%, it's being used, a lot of these backyard or the backs of these buildings are draining into the alley, so it can certainly be considered a stormwater improvement, so the other 70% is being paid out of the stormwater fund.
Much needed one as well.
Mayor and council, say if you remember when we were in the old city hall and we got a large rain a couple of years ago, this alley backed up into all of those buildings and flooded them. As part of this project, we did install additional storm basins and catch basins to slow that water down. If you remember, the parking lot now is a major inflow area for that stormwater, so we assume it's going to work really well. We haven't had any issues in the big storms that we've had so far.
More questions of staff? I have one out of curiosity as well. So the street assessments for Shakopee Avenue can accrue over, assessed for 10 years. This alley can go for 10 years, but the utility goes for five.
So, no favoritism here, mayor and council. Truly, we're looking at, you know, the payback period is up to council, so if that's something that you wanted to amend or change on any of these projects, that's certainly within your power to do so. Staff is really looking at, you know, what would that monthly basis be or yearly basis and what's affordable to pay back, as well as, you know, what's a reasonable timeline for the city to get its money back from these projects. $600 is certainly a lot less over five years than, say, $4,000 or $5,000 over 10 years.
Well, and for 600, you build up a lot of interest over 10 versus five and I understand that too. I just thought I would ask.
Absolutely. Good points for people who are watching, sir.
Counselor Whiting?
No, I'm not a tax person, but I know if those are paid upfront and those are rental properties, that can save you on some tax money too, but check with your tax person.
Counselor Lehman?
No, mine was answered.
Other questions of staff? Other questions of staff? If not, Ryan, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and make comment on this alley reconstruction project? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome and speak into the mic.
Thank you. Jim Quering, my wife and I own Pearson Florist, 112 Somerville. Number one, I would like to thank the council for your time that you spend on this. I'm sure a lot of evenings isn't very pleasant and we appreciate it. Number two, the alley did need replacement. With that said, I have a little problem with the cost overrun. How can we justify a 32% cost overrun? That's insane. If I tried to charge you 32% more for any product that I was trying to sell you, you would politely, or maybe not so politely, leave my business. And you have that privilege. I don't have that privilege. To me, that $38,551 needs to be taken off the sheet. It has to be charged, it should have never been paid, number one. It's not our fault that we started this project too late. That should have been caught in the estimating. So that disappoints me greatly. To me, the $38,551 should be charged off to the taxpayers of Shakopee totally. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's right to charge off to 10 individual businesses. That's inappropriate. That's my main beef. Now, one point of clarification that I'm not privy to is the understanding of who pays, is it taxpayer money that pays the approximately 40% of that, whoops, excuse me, both sides of the alley that the city owns for the parking lot? Is that taxpayer money? Where's that money coming from? Because if it is, I'm being double taxed. I'm paying taxes to the city and number two, you're asking me to pay the assessment. That's inappropriate. Ryan?
So mayor and council members, again, 30% of the project is being directly assessed of the street improvements here. 70% of that is being picked up by a different fund. In this case, it's being paid for out of the storm sewer fund. The city charges all properties across Shakopee based on, there's a rate, for most residential lots, it's $2 to $3 a month that goes into that storm sewer fund and that money for the other 70% is being taken from that. Just some other clarifications on our assessment policy in the residential area. Any improvements to the alleys are paid 100% by the residents. In the central business district, city council has adopted a different policy that only 30% is actually picked up by the property owners and 70% by other funding sources and typically storm or capital improvement. And the reason initially for council's establishment of that is that those alleys in the downtown business do serve for circulation, for access to those businesses, for deliveries, for, so they do benefit the greater public, as opposed to maybe the alleys in the residential area that are more specific, probably to just those specific users and the services they desire. That's for council to decide and just giving you the.
Also, part of this was the effect of slightly moving up the assessment rate from 25% to 30. It was more of a policy issue that if you get a new, brand-new street, like we just had on our public hearings previously, that those were 30% if you get a assessment, if you get a new street, alley the same way for that because it's a dual use. With all due respect, your parking lot abuts to the alley, so that is a benefit to you as well as a new alley. Is that correct?
It is, but I don't need the alley. I can function very well without the alley. So, I'm, the alley needed improvement, I stated that. The problem I have now is Ryan is saying, and I'm going to say it was Shakopee Avenue, the first reconstruction project, that was 70% as well. Here we have 40% that's owned by the city of Shakopee. Correct?
The.
Roughly.
Yeah.
That side is basically 40% of the total construction project. I don't like paying twice for something. Granted, the utility assessment isn't large. Ryan said it's probably $3, but it's still double taxation. Inappropriate. So I think you're looking at a total that should be, we should be working with $72,000 roughly. How I got that? Throw out the 38,550 and take 60% of the $120,000 estimated project cost. That was the estimated. And I know you ran into complications. That's not my problem.
Thank you.
Not my problem at all. So with that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds, make comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, if we were to change the downtown alleys to 100% like residential alleys, what would have been the assessment per property for this particular project?
Mr. Reynolds, so we have approximately 600 feet in that alley and if you're 160,000, that 120,000 would have been, you know, 20,000, what are we talking here, about?
15 to 20 grand.
$200 per foot as opposed to, you know, $79 or something like that. So significantly higher rates, you know, and all project costs associated with this, regardless of bidding dates or what happens, I mean, we have unforeseen problems on street reconstructions and other projects as well. These were legitimate costs necessary to construct that alley appropriately. Councils can certainly consider those points.
Counselor Luce?
In the residential alley, how much blacktop, how thick is it when they put it in?
Typically, we wouldn't pave less than three inches. A city street is a four-inch asphalt section with an eight-inch aggregate underneath of it. Most of our alleys are gravel in Shakopee, so a lot of those might be a couple inches to a foot of gravel on those. Some of the blacktop alleys that are in town, pretty tough shape, those two, three, four inches at best.
What I'm getting at is, now that's all concrete and how thick is that concrete down there?
So that alley, I believe, I don't have those plans in front of me, typically would be six-inch concrete.
Right, that's what I saw laying, that's about what I observed. So there's quite a difference in the pricing.
One, mayor and council, if I may, one other consideration is that concrete also lasts. The life expectancy of concrete is almost twice that of asphalt. So costs are higher with concrete, but you also get double the life value. Something else to consider there.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'm looking at this, between the 120 and the 158 and half of that difference, the total difference, 38,000, the total, the half of that difference is the 17.5, from 30 to 20, 25% to 30%. And I, that was actually my idea to change that percentage because I felt that when we're doing a road project anywhere in town, the standard policy is 30%. Why would we have an area of town less than everybody else? It's just not fair and equitable. So, half of the 38 that the gentleman is talking about is a policy decision that we've made that I supported in the name of equity. So really, we're talking about $17,000 here. We can get into semantics about double and triple and quadruple taxation. God knows, I'm there with you on that argument, not only at the city, county and state level, but at some parts of the federal government too. But we're surely not going to fix that tonight. So really, the issue is $17,000. And we're talking about why do we have a $17,000 increase really in the project? I know it looks like 38, but part of that 38 is because of a change from 25% to 30%, which is consistent with every other project in town, other than my alley, which would be 100% my cost. So really, $17,000 on a 150, 160,000 dollar project. So the question I would ask is, what was the $17,000 increase in the actual construction? You know, I'm sure there was probably a lot of extra tear out that had to happen because it was in pretty tough shape. They probably had to slope it just right so that everything would drain the way we wanted it to drain, so it's not sitting there wrecking it again like it did in the past. So I kind of know the answer, but I'm going to give you the opportunity as the engineering people to really explain it to us.
Mayor and council, I think Mr. Kurski kind of alluded to the bidding time, may have played into that a little bit. Just what I know of the project as well, a lot of the alleys that we've reconstructed in the past, typically residential or even some of the commercial ones that we've done in the past, haven't had a lot of tie-in. So a lot of extra concrete was actually added to tie this project in. I think even the PowerPoint presentation I had there kind of showed some of that. Let me grab that for you. So there were some additional costs in tying in, every single one of those businesses had roof drains and blacktop and concrete up to the alley, so some of that had to be removed to make sure grades matched and to kind of tie this alley into the surrounding area. I think when the feasibility, it was a quick feasibility estimate done by a consultant that did the rest of those improvements and maybe overlooked some of those tie-in features as well.
If I can add to it, mayor and council members, and where is this cost increase? It's from an estimate done upfront. So estimating is difficult. There's so many factors that go into it. The type of project, this was a streetscaping project that had a lot of other things tied to it that typical concrete contractors don't want to deal with. So when you bring in colored concrete and streetscaping with street lighting and plantings and infiltration basins, they're difficult projects to deliver. Costs go up because of that. June bidding, that's one of the worst times to bid a project. The timeline was tight. So all those things factor into the original estimate that was done upfront and the actual bids that the council awarded back in, must have been shortly after June of 2017 at this point.
July 18.
Right. So all of those factors play into, again, comparing to a project estimate done by an engineer upfront, using concrete prices that he may have used, concrete prices for a different project that had a lot of concrete on it with no streetscaping elements to it. So depending on the project narrative and it, prices fluctuate. And with projects, you got to take the good with the bad. We saw the Shakopee Avenue, we get kudos for saving money on it and then we got to take the hits and we, you know, this was a, we had a consultant design this and we got to take the hits with the bad on these two. And as far as, if I can comment on the double taxation, and I know you all know this, but all of the funding for this project, the three funding sources are EDA, the storm sewer fund and direct assessments. So it's a robust funding mechanism, so it is a 100% assessment. It makes it, it spreads the cost over for downtown where a lot more people use it. So we have a little more robust funding type scenario there, so we try to avoid that 100% fee that's directly assessed, which, that's where we see we can almost not deliver a project when it's 100% assessed because it's so high and it's so difficult to show that direct benefit to that immediate property. So that's why we have a funding scenario like this. So 30% is a, sometimes it gets tough when you see a change like that, but it is, it is a reasonable cost for a concrete alley when there's limited properties that would butt it.
Ryan?
I'd also say on small projects, one little oopsie or discovery on a project like that can blow up your budget very quickly as opposed to a street reconstruction when it's multiple millions of dollars. A $10,000 overrun on something is absorbed by the project pretty easily. So something like this, it shows up pretty quick.
Counselor Luce?
I'm guessing the reason we had a consultant bid this year, people were overwhelmed with other projects?
Mayor and council member Luce, this project was initiated before I got here, but it's my understanding that that was part of it. I don't know about overwhelmed. I think maybe Michael Kurski volunteered to take this one under his realm and we, I think there was a couple of different consultants involved in it. You know, our specialty isn't necessarily designing streetscape projects, so we brought in a landscape architect, which we don't have on staff, and brought a little better package. But again, these projects are tough. We got concrete curb and gutter and it's in different areas of town. It's not one continuous project, so the efficiencies of a project like this get difficult, so it's.
Well, I appreciate the gentleman's comments about the, you know, the assessment. I think you get a benefit. We did change our policy from 25 to 30. The project was a little over, but the funding source from the stormwater is the fee that we all pay, if we call it a tax or a fee, but we all pay that. But it goes to the benefit of the community and most of these projects, we just did two sections of Shakopee Avenue and the stormwater fund paid for a big portion of that, of which, you know, do I benefit as that? I think the community benefits for that double taxation, but then I didn't get an assessment for Shakopee Avenue. But I believe as a business owner, I believe that you got a benefit out of this for the assessment part and the other fees, double taxation kind of goes to the benefit of the entire community, much like all reconstruction, street reconstruction projects or anything that we have to do with stormwater to help the stormwater runoff and we did have a problem down there. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd just like to remind the gentleman of the state statutes that this public hearing is still open and you do have time to put in a written appeal to your assessments. If you're going to do that, you need to do that before the public hearing is closed tonight.
Counselor Luce?
Well, I've heard staff talk, you know, we've had plantings and colored concrete and other things in this project, but the alley itself doesn't have any of those. The plantings are in the parking lot, the colored concrete's in the patio in front of the parking lot to the west. The alleyway is just standard concrete. Yeah, there's some difference in elevation that needed to be taken into consideration and tying into buildings and that, but I'm just wondering if there isn't a little bit of commingling on projects here. on projects here that...
Mayor and Council, this project was one, a part of a larger project and it was broke, this piece was broken out for the purpose of assessments, but this project followed with, and, and was bid with the rest of the project and all the downtown improvements that did include all those items. And so when somebody bids on that larger project and package, they have to have all those specialized, and that's what Mr. Lilahog was referring to.
Counselor Lehman?
Does this total project cost in front of us include anything other than the alley?
Mayor and Council, no, this is just the alley when RJM broke this out. So I think Mr. Lilahog's point was, there was only one concrete contractor that did this, this is their flat work, concrete crew, but they also had a colored concrete crew and a curb crew, so there were not separate bids for every single item like you'd see in a road project. The north and, north country concrete was the low bidder for all the concrete work, but they also did this piece, this was bid out separately.
Counselor Luce?
Yeah, I wasn't trying to disparage staff by any means, I, I just was questioning, you know, if there was a mixing of projects and possibly the project coordinator did that, but, you know, we, we won't know that because they, you know, they gave us what they gave us as, as pricing, so...
Mayor and Council, again, when this project was bid out, this was actually the city as a general contractor, so there was no overhead and profit to the general contractor, we just paid a construction manager fee to have them do the bidding for us. So, all these pieces basically were awarded to the lowest bidder, it just happened that the same flatwork concrete contractor got all those pieces, so it was one company that did all the concrete work.
Which would make sense, why would they split it up between multiples when they're there?
And I would just say this was, as you can see from this photo, it's a great picture, thank you. There was a lot of additional flatwork here, like the curb along some of these older buildings, because we wanted to make sure we channel that stormwater, not into the buildings, but into the new catch basin. So this is not your standard flat concrete sidewalk or something, it's a very heavily used concrete alley.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this alley reconstruction assessment? Counselor Luce?
I had one last comment I was asked to bring forward by one of the building owners, the backside of where the garbage carts had to be cut out, there's a downspout right there, and when they cut into the blacktop, it looks like a lot of the rainwater coming out of the downspout is going through the crack and disappearing, so someone might want to look at that for future because we don't want deterioration.
Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and Council, so we have a warranty until, I think we checked today, it was August of next year, and so the contractor, we're still holding 20 some odd thousand dollars in retainage. There's that, that probably needs to be fixed, there's this building here, there's a little piece of concrete that did not get replaced, so they have to come back and saw that out and replace that, so that'll be under warranty.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware of it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, any other resident like to make, come, make comment in regard to this alley reconstruction? Seeing none? Counselor Whiting?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, and before I close, again, we need a letter to notify that you want to appeal this assessment before we close this public hearing? Seeing none? Motion on the table, a second to close public hearing, further discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Move to adopt resolution R-2018-132, adopting assessments for the 2017 alley reconstruction project, 2017-6.
I have a motion and a...
Second.
Second by Counselor Lehman. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you all. Moving ahead then to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting, I would stand for a motion. Counselor Mokel?
Make a motion to recess for Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting.
I have a second by Counselor Luce. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, we are standing resource. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mayor, we'll call the Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting for November 20th, to order please. Secretary, please note the role. Laurie?
Yes, I heard you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Everybody should have an agenda and a packet in front of them, a motion to approve the agenda, if there's no questions will be in order, Ms. Mokel, up, Mr. Reynolds.
Uh, Mr. President, I would say that we need to adjourn to Tuesday, December 5th, not the 18th as is listed on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, the 4th, excuse me. The 4th.
And we're going to need 19 calendars up here, too.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion by Mokel, second by Luce, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consent agenda. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consented agenda as presented.
Your second to motion? All in favor of consent agenda, which includes the EDA minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 4A, EDA bill list, any questions on the EDA bill list?
Just, I have a question on this that...
Mr. Mars?
On the bill list, we made a, on part of it, it says informational only and then policy or action, move, move to approve the bills, so I do believe we changed the policy that this is more of a informational piece for the bill list for the EDA, similar to the city aspect of it, is that correct?
Actually, I think we changed the policy at the council level for the council bills, I don't know if we did it for the EDA, and I don't know if the one body can dictate to the other.
Mr. President, we did change it for the EDA as well.
Very good.
So it is an error on our part, I...
Okay.
I'll move to, or I'll...
So is there any questions on the EDA bill list? See, none, and we'll accept that, and a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, the 4th, would be in order. Ms. Mokel?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, December 4th, 2018, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Second by Mr. Luce, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, we are adjourned. Record time.
All right. We will reconvene the city council meeting for November 20th, 2018, and move forward. We have 10A1, which was added to consent, now we have 10B1 zoning text amendment to create, to create a zoning use table. Welcome. Kyle, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council, I'm just pulling up the presentation here. On the, before you this evening is a review of zoning text amendment to create a zoning So the, sorry. So zoning use table, the council reviewed this a few months ago, we looked in a work session, the council had a chance to take a look at staff's proposal to change from a list-based code to a table-based zoning code regarding the uses. So in the state, the current code is in, it's been amended numerous times over the past couple decades using similar but not exactly the same terminology between the different chapters when text amendments have been completed. Strictly list-based, which requires reading each chapter or district to determine what uses are allowed in what areas of the community, and the list language is approximately 140 pages long in the zoning code. So if a business is looking at locating in the community, or a resident is looking at specific use regulations, what they must do currently if, to find out, say they want to open a department store, or they want to open a vehicle repair operation, they would need to look through each individual chapter and see if their specific use is listed. What the proposal that's before you this evening would be to go to a table, they can look at it, have the use, and they can just run their finger across the table and see which zones that would be allowed in. So, this is an example of a page from the current code regulations, this is from the heavy industry zone, you can see there's the purpose and the permitted uses that are listed, it's just a strictly list form, each individual zoning district in the, in the city has pages just like this, but they each have their own specific list of uses that are permitted uses that are listed, conditional uses that are listed, and then there's also accessory uses. So, besides the 140 pages, the problems with the code is there's similar and conflicting language, in some sections or some districts, a specific case would be administrative, executive, and professional offices are listed as a use in one district, and offices and office buildings are listed as a use in another district. So they mean the same thing, but they're not exactly the same. So there's, we looked at different sections of the code, we looked for where there's unnecessary requirements, we require, currently we require conditional use permits for health and fitness facilities, or multiple principal structures on a lot, staff looked at that and we decided, we don't believe those are necessary conditional use permits for the board to be reviewing and for applicants to have their projects held up for those reviews. There's also unnecessary use listings, such as relocated structures, relocating a structure is governed by the building code, zoning code necessarily shouldn't be saying anything about that. Another example is showroom facilities are a retail use, currently they're only permitted in the community commercial zone, well, a retail use, we permit in multiple areas and we don't see the reason for that specific classification. So I'll be moving forward with comparison tables and you'll be able to see where specific uses are allowed right now in the, in the current code and where they're allowed in the proposed code. Now, one of the requests from council at the last time, at during the work session was to align the, align the tables so that they can be read side by side, that's something we'll be going through later on this evening here. So some additional problems with the way the current code is, there's some listed uses that no longer make sense, such as hospitals and funeral homes in the R1C zone, those were for specific individual users, those users are no longer there anymore, so we don't view those as necessary uses to have in the zoning code. Another example would be agricultural uses in the sewer rural residential zone, those are existing subdivisions that are typically one acre lots or less, agricultural uses would allow keeping of livestock, growing of row crops outside of some, something much more significant than a backyard garden. Riding academies were also allowed in the sewered rural residential zone, looking at our current standards for keeping horses, it's, requires larger lots than what those lots currently have, so. And also cemeteries are a listed conditional use in almost all residential zones, staff wouldn't prefer that there be cemeteries all over the community in different zoning districts, we'd like to have it more specific. There's confusing language in the code, that, like what's shown on this slide, that single family detached residence is previously constructed as accessory uses to a church where the resulting lot meets the design standards. In other words, it's a house, it's not a rectory or personage anymore, it's a occupied typical dwelling unit, there's no reason for that wordiness to be in the code. And also there's the total length is 140 pages of uses and design standards, so the proposed...
Counselor Lehman?
Question, when the house was originally built, it was part of a church setup, and if it's still part of the church setup, then it's one thing, if it's separated off from the church and it's just a standalone free market single house, that's another thing, correct?
Uh, correct.
So how do we define the two, when we're only defining it as one?
Uh, they're currently, currently they're allowed to, they'd be allowed to have the rec, have rectories or parish houses, this, this specific classification is just saying that if they split off that house, it's allowed, and obviously if it's next to another house and it's in that residential zoning district, it would still be allowed.
If a new church was to be built with the rectory house, then what happens?
Uh, that would be reviewed as part of their conditional use permit.
Okay, and then how would it be defined as a single family home or part of the church?
Uh, be part of the church as part of their conditional use permit, it'd have to be on the same parcel.
Multiple buildings on the same lot?
Uh, under the proposed code, it would not be multiple buildings because we'd be removing that, but it would be reviewed as part of the church's conditional use permit.
But I guess a follow-up with Counselor Lehman, if I built a, if I built a church with a house rectory on it, all in one lot, but then later decided, hey, I'm going to sell this house, all right, and get some value out of it?
That's allowed.
I can do a simple subdivision if I can meet the lot requirements?
Exactly, yep, those lot requirements would be the same for the, they would be the requirements that are in the zoning district that the church is in, and the house.
Okay, thank you.
So the proposal is to create separate tables.
Counselor Luce? Question here, you got animal hospitals and veterinary clinics, the existing and the proposed are the same, there's no asterisks, and by the looks of this chart, they're only allowed in ag areas, well, we have two of them that I know of that are in, one's in a strip mall and one's in a, on First Avenue, so shouldn't there be a conditional use permit, asterisks on this?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Luce, I believe you're referring to the residential table?
Uh, I don't know.
If it's in, if it's got the ag zone on it, that's the residential table?
Yes.
Um, and the commercial table also has vet clinics and animal hospitals on it, so there's, there's, they're listed in the commercial table as well. I'll be showing, I'll be showing that part of the slide.
I'll let you proceed.
So the proposal before you this evening is to create a table for commercial zones and one for residential zones, and then the total amount of printed pages for those two tables is 10, less than 10 pages, so be removing about 125 pages from the, from the ordinance if the council would, would approve this this evening. So it removes the similar language from same or similar classification, also clarifying confusing language, making the code more user-friendly for staff, boards, residents, and developers, removing the uses that no longer make sense, reduce the length of the code, and remove conditional use permit requirements for non-intrusive uses. So, sorry, this is the, now this is the comparison table, and this was included in the report, and this is in the presentation, so you'll notice that the uses are aligned in areas where there was needed to be space to align the table, there are some blanks. So, the blanks are just to align, align the separate tables, you see, this is the commercial table, that's first, the current regulations are on the left and the proposed regulations are on the right, and to answer Counselor Luce's question for animal hospitals and veterinary clinics, in the old code, they were conditional uses in the highway business zone, the central business district, neighborhood commercial, and community commercial, and in the proposed code, they'd be conditional uses in all of those districts. So actually, it would be increasing the amount of possibilities for places that they, that a vet office could go.
Yeah, because they're basically a non-intrusive dwelling or structure because they're just bringing a couple animals in, if they're boarding, that's a different, different story.
Yes, Mayor Mars, Counselor Luce, that's correct, and that would depend on the individual clinics themselves, and that's why they're still conditional uses. Some cases, a vet office is dealing with dogs and cats, others might be dealing with horses and cows and things like that, so, or if they have boarding operations too. That's why we would want to review it under a conditional use permit. So I've got the highlights for each individual page, again, this is the commercial, this is the commercial table, the highlights of the changes are noted on the right side of the slide, so in this case, the reclassification of financial institutions to banks and financial institutions, an addition of columbaria, that's where urns are kept and sometimes that's places of worship or funeral homes, where instead of being interned at a, at a cemetery that they would be, that the ashes would be deposited at a place of worship or a funeral home. So that's a new type of use that wasn't really thought of in the old zoning code, we've added it to the, this proposal. Removal of bus terminals and taxi stands from the central business district, there's removal of agricultural uses from the commercial zoning districts. There's removal of agricultural uses from the commercial zoning districts and reclassification of commercial vehicle rental to vehicle rental commercial. Now, in those cases like that where we've got an individual use, people are wondering about vehicle rental, we want to try to have them so that they're all in the same area of the code, so that there, people don't have to look in multiple different areas to try to find the specific use. And the addition to vet clinics in other zones. So, I've got all of the comparison tables here. If you have any questions, you can certainly stop me during this or, or I'll move on to the next slide. If you'd like some time, you can certainly review this on the screen. Otherwise, I can move on to the next page.
Move forward then.
Okay. So, this is the next page. There was, the highlights of the changes are the removal of decorative landscape features as an accessory use. That's obviously, that we would view that as a given. That's not something that needs to be a listed use in the zoning code. Removal of exterior storage of goods for sale from the highway business zone, that's another, that's another thing. That's not a common, not a common use. It would be similar to an open sales lot. Open sales lots would be areas where there's not a building, where it's just a parking lot and stuff is for sale. That's not something that, not a use that we would want to necessarily have in the community where there's not buildings and there's just things for sale and open parking areas. Health and athletic facilities become a permitted use, and the addition of industrial slash technical training schools to multiple zones, and the expansion of dwellings combined with another permitted use, like mixed-use development. So, that would be added to other zones.
Counselor Whiting?
Looks like you jumped over the remove gas stations from B3. Now, is that something?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is that, why would we want to do that if, wouldn't that be conditional use?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Whiting, as far as that, we wouldn't necessarily want to be having more large vehicles or deliveries of fuel. We'd be looking at more types of uses that are conducive to the downtown environment, like zero lot line, something that's more in character with our downtown. Gas station isn't necessarily in character, requires a larger lot, requires larger vehicles and fuel delivery. So, it's not necessarily, we're looking at what the character of what we want the downtown to be like.
Yes, my only question is, is, and I'm not sure, I don't have the zoning map in front of me, but there's a gas station down there now, and is that right outside of the B3 zone or is that?
The two gas stations that are in the downtown area would be the Shell Station and the Holiday Gas Station. Those are both Zone B1, and gas stations would still be allowed.
On the west side of town is what I'm, I'm talking about, the one that just had the fire.
That's, that is Zone B1. The, the gas station that was removed, that, that street is the border. The gas station that was demolished, that was B3.
Just wanted to make sure that they could have opportunity.
Yes, they definitely do, yep.
Counselor Lehman?
No, I was, I was gonna point that out, that was B1.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. Continue?
So, on the next page for commercial uses, be removal of redundant manufacturing uses. That's referring to the portions of the table talking about the EIS categories. There were, there were some redundant classifications. We combined some of the wording to reduce the number of classifications that you can see there are a couple that have been removed, but additional wording was added to the, to those, to those sections. Public or private schools changed to school, public or private. Micro distillery is now called distillery micro. Motels is now hotels and motels. And multiple family dwellings are added to commercial zones, the removal of open sales lots, no limit on office space in the heavy industry zone. Under the current code, office space without a conditional use is, it'd have to be under 35%. In the business park or in the industrial park, we would obviously want to encourage offices to be developed. And parking spaces are covered in the parking ordinance, so having that in the zoning code wasn't, wasn't viewed as necessary.
It's interesting, just to note, you know, kind of a planner at heart here for a lot of years to watch some of the, what was popular items years ago, decades ago, get removed from the code that is no longer applicable in, in certain areas where before it, you know, the, the gas stations in, you know, in the downtown area, bus terminal, things like.
Harness shops.
Yeah, I just, I, it's interesting. And then the inclusion of things that you would never thought would be in downtown or, you know, in, in other areas. So, I, I find the, the evolution of planning and, and zoning is, watching this process is great.
Counselor Whiting?
No, I assume some of the wording changes is just like the micro distillery is now called distillery micro. Now, that's just so you can find it in the chart easier, correct?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Whiting, that is, that answer is yes. A micro distillery, the, that's governed by the state of Minnesota, so there's an actual definition about how much they can produce per year. So, a distillery which would be bigger than a micro distillery, those are allowed in the heavy industry zone and light industry zone. So, that's for mass production.
And we talked about that at the last workshop on this, but some of the wording is, is making it easier to try and find it on this chart is what I.
Yep, so you say, I want to open up a distillery, and then you'd look for, well, how big is my distillery gonna be? I wouldn't look to the M for micro distillery. I'd want to look for.
I see, okay.
Continue?
Uh, next page, we removed the redundancy of parking, classified as private garages or off-street parking. There were some, also some redundant sections on antennas and communication devices, or sections with similar wording, so we removed that. Pet daycare and boarding was added to the light industry and heavy industry zones. Currently, it's only allowed in the B1 highway business zone. So, we've had some folks over the years that have contacted us with questions about that, and we look at that as a potential use for heavy industry zones as close to employment sections, and then also wouldn't be intrusive to surrounding residential areas if they're in an industrial zone.
For the pet daycare and I, I1 or 2 though, just that, that brings more, you know, average cars into a, into that area for that use. Is that, you think that's compatible?
Uh, Mayor Mars, members of the council, yes, we would look at that as a compat, as a compatible use based on their, I mean, our industrial parks are, and industrial areas are well-served by roadways, so we wouldn't view additional traffic as an, as an issue. We would allow an office building to be added that could have 500 employees, which would have much less impact than a few dogs and cats. Research labs were covered under another category, so that was, that's a classification that was removed. Recreational equipment, we combined with other similar uses to have one classification versus multiple ones. And residences for security personnel was changed to an accessory use. So, that's that specific page. You'll notice on the next page for restaurants, we've reclassified the restaurants to two different types. Currently, there's multiple list, there's multiple listings, there's four classifications. We've removed, we've reclassified them to areas that have outdoor seating that's used after 10:00 PM and areas that, or restaurants that have outdoor seating that is not used before 10, or not used after 10:00 PM. So, those are the differences as conditional uses or permitted uses for those types. So, we've removed a couple of classifications that are also, they also have confusing language there. There was a removal of self-storage facilities from the B1 highway business zone. Currently, the requirements in the B1 highway business zone requires a setback of 1,000 feet from the residential zone, which really limits the amount, the locations for self-storage. And we would look at wanting to have those, have our B1 highway business zone properties used for commercial and service-type uses, not areas that don't generate employees or traffic. They're allowed in other zoning districts. Re-classified retail and services to remove a classification, so that was combined with another one. Removal of showroom facilities, which I mentioned earlier, and the addition of short-term lodging rentals to zones with residential uses, so. Any other, any questions on this page?
Just the, I saw this twice now, the removal of showroom facilities, which would be classified as a retail use. You know, years ago, there was the concept of, you know, I'm out in the industrial park, I'm a manufacturer, a distributor, most of my product goes out the door in a truck, but I want to sell my widgets a little bit. We used to have a little area, what, 15% of the space to sell my widget?
20%, yeah.
Yeah, something like that, years ago. So, now, we would just say that's a retail use?
Uh, Mayor Mars, members of the council, we actually still, there is another classification, so this was confusing. Currently, you'll notice on this page, the, there's retail sales of products manufactured, fabricated, assembled, or stored on-site. That's what you're referring to for your showroom facility. Now, the showroom that I mentioned previously, that was just the community commercial zone. Community commercial, they're probably not manufacturing anything or like that. We would call that a retail use. So, if you were in the industrial park and you're making motorcycle parts and you want to sell those motorcycle parts, you would still be allowed to do that.
All right.
Thank you. Others? Continue?
Okay, so, on the next page, there would be the addition of fuel and gas tanks as accessory uses in I1 and I2 zones. A lot of our industrial users have nitrogen tanks or oxygen tanks that are outside. We have treated that in the past as, as exterior storage. We would have that, want to have that as an accessory use and not require a separate conditional use permit for that, provided they're less than the height of the building. We wouldn't view that as an intrusive use. So, we would call that an accessory use, and we're just really clarifying that. Dwelling units and mixed use is covered under other classifications. The height requirements in select commercial zones were increased to 45 feet. Taverns were included in the restaurants classification. We changed movie theaters to a permitted use. Currently, they're a conditional use. And seasonal sales of vegetables were moved to other zoning districts outside of the B1. And you, we viewed utility services as an unnecessary use. Obviously, buildings would have utility services, so there's no, there's no need for that to be a listed use in the zoning code. And the addition of a vehicle sales auction to I2, so that clarifies the things for Man, for Manheim. Granted, they've got their own approvals for that's there, but this memorializes it in our zoning ordinance.
Questions?
I saved all mine for the last. I'll go over them all at the end.
And then this is the last page on commercial, would be the inclusion of warehousing and wholesaling in the EIS sections for another classification. So, where we were able to add classifications or just reduce wordiness and other, and make the, make the table more user-friendly, we did that. So, that's, this is the last page of the commercial regulations. If there's no questions, I can move on to the residential tables.
Seeing none, move ahead.
Okay, these are on the left side of it, it's the same, same setup as the commercial tables. These are the residential zones. The existing uses are on the left and the proposed uses are on the right. We removed agricultural uses from the sewored rural residential zone. We expanded the bed and breakfast to other residential zones and removed cemeteries as a use in multiple zones. And then also the removal of clinics in the R1C zone and the addition of columbaria.
Question, Counselor Lehman?
There seems to be a theme in here for sewored rural residential being removed of a lot of different topics. And my concern with that is that in our discussions with the township, we agreed that if we put a pipe in, that they don't necessarily have to hook up to it for a period of time, and they could continue operating their 10, 20, 40 acres. And a lot of these agricultural uses fit into that, what, what I would then view as a sewored rural residential setting. They're not necessarily hooked up to it, but it's there in the street in front of their property.
Well, they would change the use if they started doing something different that, that would require a hookup, and I know that we discussed this. We're only gonna, if they, only if they have a major failure on their equipment would we, on their well or their septic system be, you know, then they would need to get hooked up.
So, let me try this, try looking at this from a different perspective. So, let's say there's a 40-acre property in the township that is not into shock P yet, and we decide we're gonna put a sewer down some road and we're gonna develop left of that property and put that sewer line past that property, and that property decides they don't want to be annexed yet and they don't want to hook up yet, and their systems are working. These wouldn't apply to them because they're not part of the city?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, they would, they would have to follow Scott County zoning. Until they're in the city, they wouldn't follow, they wouldn't follow city, city zoning. And then, if they were to come in and say they were on, they ended up being zoned sewer rural residential, they're annexed into the city, they've got eight horses or cows and goats, they'd still be able to. They'd be a legal non, they'd be a legal non-conforming use. If they get, they get annexed in and they don't have a barn, they wouldn't be able to build a barn and start keeping goats and cows and horses on a sewer rural residential zone.
But if they had a barn and horses and they wanted to rebuild the barn or whatever?
Yes, they, they would be allowed to rebuild under the state statute. They'd have 180 days to apply for a building permit. Yep, that certainly would be allowed.
Storm comes through and takes down their barn or something, they can still rebuild it?
Yes, yep. Same, same location, same height, and use it the same way.
All right.
Legal non-conforming.
Correct, because it was legal at the time it was built.
Right. Okay.
So, next page. Removal of multiple principal structures on a lot as a listed conditional use. Removal of home occupations with multiple employees, reporting for work there. Home occupations are listed accessory use. This was a specific classification that was subject of a text amendment for one specific user. That user's no longer there anymore. We wouldn't necessarily view home occupations with multiple employees reporting to a house as something that we'd want as the city develops more. So, parking is also covered under the parking ordinance, and one lodging room in rural residential is covered under short-term rentals or bed and breakfast. So, next page, there was the removal of relocated structures, the removal of riding academies, the removal, also the removal of redundant dwelling classifications. A lot of those classifications were in the R2, were in the R2 zone. It was really confusing, confusing to read, and there was some redundant classifications. And then, the addition of short-term lodging rentals.
Counselor Lehman?
Seasonal produce stands only allowed in egg?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, that's correct. That's how, that's how it is currently, and that's for, these are for residential zones. Commercial zones, they could be in multiple different areas for seasonal sales of produce.
Okay, because I'm looking at your proposed, and it shows a P, only in egg. It doesn't say anything about any other zone.
Uh, that's, that's correct. That's say, you've got, you've got agricultural land, you grow sweet corn, and you're selling, you got a pickup and parked in front of your house, that's allowed.
What if I want to park at the, by the hardware store like Severs does every year?
Then you get a seasonal sales permit in the highway business zone. It's allowed.
Okay.
We actually expanded that, we actually expanded that classification. Before, it was only, you'd only be allowed to have it in egg or B1. In the commercial table, we added it to multiple districts.
So, if I go back to the commercial table, seasonal produce stands is gonna be in there?
Yep. And it'll be in more areas than it was before.
All right.
And this is the last page of the residential table. Townhouses are covered by other, by another classification. Utility services isn't necessary to be in the zoning code, and wind turbines are covered under a separate section in the zoning code. So, this clarifies that they're allowed in multiple zones. Before, it was only listed in the egg zone and sewer rural residential. So, with specific conditions, they can be a conditional use in multiple zones. So, the asterisk on these, the asterisk on these pages means there's specific conditions that need to be met.
Right. Not necessarily conditional use, just additional conditions.
Correct.
I think in the other chart, you mentioned the utility service is not necessary.
I think in the other chart, you mentioned the utility service is not necessary. Um, and now you've mentioned it in the residential part of it, I believe. Now, how does that fit with our generation plant?
Uh, that, that's a different use. Utility, that's be a utility service structure, that would be a utility service structure. Um, utility services is just talking about the, like, oh, like overhead power lines. Um, a substation would be a utility service structure.
Okay.
Which is, which is listed.
They are listed somewhere.
Yep, they're listed on, they're listed on this page. They're a permitted use with specific conditions, so...
But you just had it as utility service not necess- oh, you had services.
Utility services was removed.
Other questions? Continue?
So, uh, for this evening is the proposed text amendment. On November eighth, the Planning Commission reviewed this request and unanimously recommended that the city council approve it by a vote of seven to zero. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for any further questions.
Questions of staff? Um, we've seen this twice. Um, I'm impressed that it's, uh, makes it easier to read, simplistic. You're dropping over a hundred pages of, of text. Um, I think this is worth a while to try in the, in a, in a graph mode rather than page by page. And I know when I read our code, I, I gotta flip to two or three sections to figure out exactly what my, if my widget factory can fit in here or there and what I need. And, um, this table form, I think, uh, would, would benefit, uh, our community and as well as developers. Counselor Whiting?
I think the staff has put a lot of work into this.
Oh, my gosh.
And, uh, I'm just, I know you've gone through a lot of details on this, but if there is something that comes up that you should go, oh, I forgot this, you know, I think that, uh, um, obviously you'd bring it back, but I'm not, I'm not afraid of that coming back. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're keeping an eye on that, and as things crop up, as I assume they might, uh, that we address them and just take care of it.
Definitely. And, uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Whiting, if we see something that, uh, there's an omission or an, or an issue, we wouldn't hesitate to come back. We want the, we want the code to be correct. We want it to work for us and work for our residents.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I think staff did a ton of work on this. Uh, everything looks good that I've seen. I'm sure there's, you know, somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna find a flaw. Well, when that happens, it can be amended. And with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 02018-017, zoning text amendment creating zoning use tables.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Mokel. Did you have an additional question?
Uh, no, I was just also gonna say thank you, staff, for, um, the work that you put into this, and obviously from our workshop, that it's bringing those, um, line by line so that we could see across.
I apologize, I didn't have this earlier.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Counselor Lehman?
I got a question. Are there any conditions or changes in the actual code being made by this document?
Um, Mayor, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, yes. There's definitely, looking at the tables where there's different uses that are listed as allowed in different areas, yes. It's not simply just making a table of the allowed uses. Um, that's why we, we got the comparison tables. So the left side is what's, how it is currently, and the right side is what we were proposing.
So we're making pretty substantial changes to the city code in a form of a table, but the table is actually gonna be transported into the actual code with wording?
The, uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, the table would be in the code.
Right, but if the table says you can do this here now, and the current code says you can't do this here now, we're gonna have to change the wording in that code to say, now you can do this here.
The words are gonna be removed.
Right?
Yep, the words are gonna be removed, and we'll be going with tables.
Okay.
Michael?
Mayor Mars and council members, so if you think about it, this table actually replaces about a hundred and thirty pages of the code itself. So if, at a future date, council had some issue comes up, as someone mentioned, we hadn't thought of, instead of changing a whole code section, you'll just modify the table. So it'll be much easier to do, and, and I think it more transparent. I mean, right now, I think the biggest issue we have is that there's a lot open to major interpretation in the current written word. The table doesn't really leave anything open to interpretation.
There's, there's, there's actually a lot of interpretation in the, in this also because everywhere, on almost every page, it says that, well, example, other accessory uses customarily to a permitted or conditional use is determined by the zoning administrator. And almost every page has that, where if it's basically not in here or it's gray and, and capricious, it's up to the zoning administrator. So all of our gray has been turned over to one individual to, to decide.
And Mayor and Council, that's, that's how it is now on most of the code. It basically says in every chapter, if this isn't clear, it's up to the zoning administrator. And then if you don't like that decision, you appeal to the Board of Adjustments. And if you don't like that decision, then you appeal to the city council.
Yeah, that's just, that's the process that we currently have in place. That's not a change at all.
Well, and what I'm trying to do is, in the course of two days, because I took Sunday off, I didn't, didn't look at this on Sunday, but I did look at it Saturday and, and Monday. I'm trying to figure out not only where it's changed between where it's allowed or not allowed, or maybe it's allowed in more places under the proposed, um, but if it's changed from, um, a permitted use to an accessory use to a conditional use, or if the conditions under a permitted use or an accessory use have changed in the proposal itself. Does that make sense?
The, where there's an, where there's an asterisk?
Right, it says there's...
None of, that has not changed.
Okay.
Those are current regulations that are in place, and they would stay in the code.
Okay, but is there any that have been changed? If one, if something goes from a, uh, permitted use to a conditional use, conditional use, that's a completely different process, right?
Correct.
Okay, so if something goes from an, um...
In most of these cases, we went from ta- changing a conditional use and making it a permitted use.
From restrictive?
We went, we went less restrictive.
Right.
And, and in some cases, we've added the little asterisk where it may not have been before.
Uh, can't... There a specific example? I don't believe that would be the case.
Wind energy conversion systems or windmills.
Okay, that's, that's a section in the, that's a section in the code that already exists today. It's not in the specific uses. There's an actual section of the code that's devoted to wind turbines, and there's specific conditions. And this is memorializing that they're allowed in multiple zoning districts, and that would, they would just have to follow the current regulations.
And previously existing, they didn't have the little asterisk, so there wasn't any additional conditions other than the condition.
Well, those conditions were, those conditions were still there. This is where actually taking care of an error that should have taken place when the, when turbine ordinance was adopted.
So your existing chart here should have had an asterisk on it by the C?
Yes, for existing. Yes, there should, there should have been. This is correcting that.
This is less restrictive.
And, and that's part of the problem. You have a patchwork quilt over the last, how long? And as we made changes through this code, it didn't match up. Language didn't match up. Definitions didn't match up. And so it made it incredibly difficult for anybody to understand what we were looking to do. What we've done is we've taken all of that language and we've said, okay, let's get to the meat of what we're trying to communicate with people. And then we put it in a table to where it's very easy to understand, because it didn't match up before. And I think that wind turbine example is a perfect example. It's covered somewhere else, but it didn't, it didn't, we didn't go back and fix this piece of it when we, when we put that into place.
Or we amended part of one small thing of it, but it never got in the bigger picture of it. And that's where that quilt aspect of it.
So quite...
How many times have we had a code rewrite in the last thirty years in our community? I know of one big one we did in the nineties, I believe. Otherwise, it's all been a small section by amendment, uh, through the years. So I look at this as being less restrictive and more simplistic, uh, for, for our code.
And, and that's part of what we've been trying to accomplish throughout a lot of what we've been doing. Making things easy for people to understand. We're gonna talk about that in the budget.
Right.
We totally transformed the budget to try to make it easy for people to understand. That's no different than what we're doing here.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, as I stated in my motion there, you know, the, the one thing I can guarantee everybody here and everybody listening, this will be amended, and it probably won't take that long. Um, the other, uh, part of what I want to say is, Kyle, you don't need to, uh, apologize for anything that you guys didn't do. This is a work between your, your staff, city staff, and the city council. We're all learning on this thing. You know, we gave you some good ideas, and you've come back with a lot of other better ideas. So, you know, it, it's a work in progress, and we're all doing it, so.
Do you have more questions?
I do. Under, oh, page two of the ordinance, I guess, it's right after the page with the ordinance on it, says table of uses for residential zones. Do you have that page?
Uh, table of uses. That's the, that's the clean copy, so it would be the, uh, the right side page on this presentation here.
Okay.
Sarah's just...
And I'm, I'm looking at the daycare facilities serving twelve or fewer persons, daycare facilities serving thirteen or more, and daycare serving thirteen to sixteen. And I'm thinking, well, thirteen to sixteen is the same as thirteen or more. Um, and the one is a conditional in every zone, and the other one's only allowed in, uh, R-3, R-4, and PRD. I guess I'm, I'm not following along on that.
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lehman, the reason, the reason for that specific, uh, section is daycare is serving thirteen or more persons. Uh, you could, you could make an argument that this should be sixteen or more persons. Um, we have that in the PRD, R-3, and R-4, because if it's serving more than thirteen, say it could be a hundred, uh, we'd want that in, uh, higher intensive use, uh, zoning district like the R-3, R-4, or the PRD zone. We wouldn't want, uh, daycare with, that serves a hundred student, or a hundred, hundred students in a single-family residential zone.
Okay, so should this, like you said, say sixteen or more persons should...
Yes, that would be, that would be a correct thing that we, a correction that we can note.
Okay. See, I did actually read this. And I tried to understand where you're going with it, but it, you know, I read things like that, and it's like, they're saying the same thing, but they're not jiving, because somebody could come in with fourteen and they could say, I'm allowed anywhere.
Until they have more than sixteen, yeah.
Right.
Yep. Thank you.
So, as I look this over and try to line it up better, when I find these little nuances, I should tell you about it?
Definitely.
All right.
Motion on the table for the second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving ahead then to Counselor, motion for ten-minute recess.
Second.
Oh, uh, motion on the table, uh, second for no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll stand in recess for ten minutes. We'll stand in recess for 10 minutes. Reconvene the city council, City Shakopee City Council meeting for November 20th, 2018. We are up for 10B, uh, 10B2 text amendment for off-street parking requirement for the city's sections. Uh, Michael?
Mayor and Counsel, again, Kyle will be up here in two seconds, but he has become our codifier expert, trying to right-size some of our regulations and recognize some of the issues we've been having over the years. So, again, we're open to suggestions if there's, just like on the last one, if there's items you see that we think we should change, we're happy to take friendly amendments.
Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Before this evening is another zoning text amendment, this time it would be to the off-street parking requirements. Reasons for the revision, as we're looking to right-size the regulations for the number of spaces based on their specific use, and include a provision for maximum number of spaces. We'd like to modernize and add flexibility to the, to the design requirements and design capabilities within the code, specifically pavement in residential areas, compact spaces, proof of parking, and bicycle parking. So, we're looking at moving from a parking ordinance that goes back a few decades to something that's more modern, and we looked at a number of different areas when we considered this parking ordinance. So, we wanted to remove unnecessary sections and unnecessary classifications, and clarify areas of common confusion. So, considerations that, that we made as staff when we reviewed the zoning, or the text for the off-street parking regulations was, we looked at problem areas in the current code based on staff experience and also complaints that we've received. We reviewed the current planning industry techniques and for requirements. We reviewed, we reviewed the regulations in comparable cities, and we reviewed multiple aerial photos and, and performed site visits to different parking areas in Shakopee and also in other cities, to see how they're, see how they're handled. So, we've got a lot of different aerial photos from different times of day, and a lot of different sources for that, so that was very helpful. Also, staff experience between Mr. Noble and myself, being residents in the community, being familiar with the community, helped a lot. So, we'll start with the main changes that were proposed, that are proposed in the zoning text amendment. Uh, in the residential sections, it would be a requirement to pave in the residential zones, except in the agricultural zone and the rural residential zone. As it's proposed currently, there'd be a reduction in the length of RVs permitted in driveways in districts other than ag, rural residential, and sewer rural residential. I understand that's a topic of concern. Currently, the allowed length is 35 feet. The proposal was 25 feet. We can certainly adjust that if, if that's viewed as necessary. Uh, we'd also look at having a limited 45% paved area in the front yard of single-family homes. That would be to allow adequate parking areas, but not have an entire front yard be paved. Uh, so, this takes into account, say, a 60-foot wide lot, which is a relatively narrow lot, but even if it has a three-stall garage, that would still allow for an adequate, that would still for, allow for three-stall garage and parking area under that 45% on a 60, 60-foot wide lot. Uh, clarification also on trailer length, um, in the limit for 20-foot trailers in backyards, so that's trailers that are parked on turf, not on improved surfaces. Uh, that's a common question, and one of the amendments would be to clarify that language on the length. Um, and also, an adjustment to the multifamily parking to be based on the type of unit. Currently, in the zoning code for multifamily, multifamily dwellings, regardless of if it's a studio apartment or a three-bedroom, the amount of parking spaces that are required is the same. So, we want to get into the specific unit type. Uh, so, we'd look at one and a half spaces for studio or one bedrooms, two spaces for two bedrooms, and 2.5 for three bedrooms, so.
Counselor, uh, Counselor Whiting?
You want to take these one by one, or you want to go through the presentation?
Well, let's have him finish his, or, questions?
Okay. Next slide, just shows for reference when talking about lengths of RVs. Uh, that's a 25-foot class CRV versus a 35-foot class ARV. So, that's just a representative picture, um, that's to show for represent, representation purposes. So, the main changes in the commercial section of the code, we allow for, would allow for up to 20% as proof of parking. That's a common term that's used in many cities. Uh, proof of parking would be an area that parking could be built. It's outside of parking setbacks, outside of wetland areas, drainage and utility easements, conservation easements. Uh, so, if a user wants to locate their business, and they're required by the code to have 100 parking spaces, and they say, "We've got stores nationwide, we know we don't need 100 parking spaces, uh, we only need 85." Right now, the code would require them to do 100 parking spaces, or they'd have to get a variance. Um, in addition to having an allowance for 20% of the requirements to be proof of parking, that allows developers to not build parking that they don't see as necessary. There's a provision that if it's found to be necessary, then they'd be required to build that on their site. So, we also added a provision for allowing up to 10% of required spaces to be compact car spaces, and also defined what that size is. Uh, we also allowed administrative review of shared parking areas, and allow, and increased the allowed proximity from 300 feet to 500 feet. Currently, if a use wants, wants to have shared parking, they would get a review by the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for a shared, for a shared parking agreement. We included the same language in the code for having a recorded agreement on both properties, but it just allows it to be done administratively instead of requiring board action. So, some additional changes in the commercial requirements would be the additional, addition of bicycle parking requirement, and it's based on the amount of, amount of required vehicle parking, which is two spaces plus 5% of required vehicle parking. So, in other words, it'd be one bike space for 20 vehicle spaces. Now, areas that are, or uses where there wouldn't be typically a lot of bicycle uses, say, like junkyards, furniture stores, things like, uses like that, there is an exemption in the code that allows them to not provide that. So, if it doesn't make sense, we don't want to require it. But, a provision also for parking maximums based on 20% of the minimum parking requirement, and exceeding the minimums requires purview of paving. So, the goal of this, the goal of this ordinance is to not have large expanses of parking areas that are unused, um, and require developers to think about that. We've got some areas in town that I'll be showing some pictures on the slide, in my slideshow, uh, where there's not a lot of parking that's used, and it's area that could be used for buildings, jobs, and more, uh, higher, higher and better uses than just vehicle parking. And also, it also increases burdens on our storm sewer system. So, those are things that were considered when we reviewed the, reviewed this ordinance. Also, we looked at removal of unnecessary use classifications such as airports and vending machine establishments, riding academies and taxi stands. Uh, those are sections that have been removed. Um, and the addition of needed classifications, such as a specific classification for grocery stores, laundromats, and pet daycare and boarding. So, those are classifications that weren't in the ordinance right now, we would like to add them. So, some of the adjustments on required spaces, we looked at right-sizing the requirements to, in some cases, increase the parking requirements, and in some cases, many cases, decrease the parking requirements. So, for funeral homes, currently, it's one per employee. Uh, we looked at changing that to propose to one per 3.5 seats, which would be more in line with a church or a place of, another place of assembly. So, one per employee wouldn't appear to make a lot of sense for a funeral home for parking. Furniture stores, currently, there it's one per 400, one space per 400 square feet. Uh, we're proposing one per 400 square feet up to 10,000 square feet, or 9,999. And then, once the store is, a store is larger than that, then we would reduce the requirement. So, we'd have a sliding scale for the parking requirements for that use. Medical and dental clinics, currently, it's one per 200. We propose to be one per 225. Uh, manufacturing's currently one per 500 square feet. We'd look at going to one per 600. Uh, pet daycare and boarding, one per 10 pets. So, this is a, this is an aerial photo of Target and Kohl's. Uh, this was taken in the spring, this is in April this was taken. You can see there's a lot of unused parking areas, there's a lot of areas where snow has been stockpiled, that even during the, even during the winter months or peak months, snow is piled in, over the parking areas. Uh, holiday shopping time is considered the peak shopping time, and if those spaces were really needed, these stores would be hauling the snow out of there rather than leaving it in, leaving it in piles. So, this is, this is an example of looking to right-size the regulations. So, this is another area of town that showcases other multiple uses, whether they're commercial or industrial. This is off of 12th Avenue, so on the, you've got, on the bottom left side of the screen is Furniture, Furniture Mart and Ashley Furniture. Then, to the east of it is Goodwill, uh, or, sorry, it's the Warner, Warner Stellian, and now Furniture Outlet, and to the east is Goodwill, and then Holiday and Express. Uh, so, and then Fairfield Inn is under construction. So, those are commercial uses. You can see the furniture stores got a very limited number of cars in their parking area. That's why we wanted to adjust the parking requirements for furniture stores and appliance stores. Uh, they're, they don't, they're not as intensive as other retail uses. Then, on the, on the north side of 12th Avenue, you can see, uh, these are industrial buildings that are zoned heavy industry. They'd be manufacturing or warehousing. Warehousing is one space per employee on larger shift. We looked at keeping that the same. And then, for manufacturing, going from one per 500 square feet to one per 600. So, reducing the parking requirements.
Counselor Lewis?
Could you go back to the Kohl's and Target slide, please? Being that we know that they have excess parking there, would it, in the current code, would they be able to possibly put a satellite building out in the parking lot that would, you know, take up the extra spaces?
Uh, Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, that would be the, that would be the hope. Um, if they can come up with something that would work and meet the, meet the requirements. Uh, we do have the classifications, we adjusted the classifications for retail centers. This would qualify as a retail center. Uh, we'd reduce the requirement. Also, um, they could have shared parking, uh, which I believe they do have as part of the Shakopee Valley Marketplace PUD, and then they'd also be able to have a proof of parking area. So, I believe the, yes, they would be able to have a potential for a satellite building out there. And that's, that's something that we'd be looking for in this case.
So, there, it'd be basically the opposite of being grandfathered in, then. They, they would be going to the new code, which is less stringent.
If their, if their goal is to have, if their goal is to have another building, then the answer is yes.
But that's a, in a setting like this, actually, this is the, what's happening around, all around the metro, at the bigger malls, but this is a good example, because, you know, all this parking that have never seen full, no matter what time, uh, they could sell a lot, or what you're seeing is development in those parking lots now. It's just not needed, and if you drive around the metro area, these parking lots are getting, uh, they're, obviously, the requirements are down, but they're putting, they're, they're putting a building there.
Yeah, and it only makes sense because taxation goes up with a building versus a parking lot.
Yep. Mayor Mars, uh, Counselor Lewis, you may have seen an article recently that Walmart's looking at doing that for their parking areas that they're not using. They're looking at developing that. Uh, a specific example of the remodeling of a parking lot would be Southdale Mall. They've got a lot of development going on around their areas that were parking. They've got apartments, there's other retail stores. So, it's something that's going on, and we'd like to adjust our regulations to allow for that and still maintain adequate parking.
Counselor Lewis?
I think with the e-commerce coming in so heavy, that a lot of these, you know, what they used to call peak parking is diminished considerably with the e-commerce. I mean, when, when they're full, um, they probably are, I'm just guesstimating, at half of what they used to be, because a lot, so many people are shopping online.
There's a lot of people that are doing that, and also, there's a lot with ride, uh, ride-sharing services, where people are get, maybe getting rid of a car, and they're taking an Uber everywhere.
Yeah, there's so many of those different things coming into play.
Okay, proceed.
So, adjustments continued, be enhancing the sliding scale for parking requirements for retail. Uh, currently, the Currently, the regulations are one per one hundred and fifty square feet for retail operations that are less than fifty thousand square feet. And then it's one per two hundred for greater than fifty thousand square feet, which is a retail center. So our proposal would be to have an additional classification. So for up to ten thousand square feet, it would be one per two hundred. From ten thousand one to fifty thousand, it would be one per two-twenty-five. And greater than fifty thousand is one per two-fifty for retail. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for any questions on that, on the text amendment.
All right. Questions of staff? Counselor Lewis?
I have one quick one here. When you were talking about trailers and the length of trailers, I've had a citizen question me on the length of a trailer, does it, is it going to be depicted by what the title says it is, or what the actual length from the end of the trailer to the tongue is?
Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, the proposed amendment would be the entire length of the trailer, including the tongue and anything that's on the trailer. So say you've got a bunch of things that are piled on a utility trailer, or a boat with an outboard motor, and the motor is extended. It would be the total length of the trailer, so we don't get into where somebody ends up getting a ticket, and they've got a trailer that's twenty-two feet in total length, but somebody else has one that's twenty, and it's okay, and we're looking for, we're looking for total length of them.
What I'm getting at, though, is the gentleman that questioned me on it, his title says one thing, and the actual total length says something else. So I'm just wondering, you know, where, where are we setting the rule at? Are we gonna measure it?
It would be the measured length is the proposal right now.
Okay.
From tongue of the, it specifies the tongue of the trailer and all parts of the trailer and items on the trailer.
Okay.
I can clarify, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but you had two different descriptions for utility trailers and RVs. The utility trailers had the tongue included. The RVs did not.
Correct, that was, for RVs, that's the, that's the length.
Right, so it does not include the tongue.
Not in that specific classification. We can certainly change, adjust language on that. In the case where, say, like a, like a motorhome would be different than a trailer with a fifth wheel or a tongue. Motorhomes don't, wouldn't have that.
Travel trailer has a three-foot tongue.
Yep. So that would be something that could be amended.
Okay. Counselor Layman?
Okay, first page. Under summary, summary of proposed changes, it talks about the addition of a section to follow, allow up to twenty percent of required parking as proof of parking. Not construct it as required parking, but have the area, area denoted on the development maps in case there's a future need. My question is, is there a timeline? It's a couple-part question. First is, who is responsible for if there's a future need to develop that area into parking? Is it the developer that comes back, or is it the, the new end-user that the developer built it for? Who's actually responsible for building that parking?
It would be the, it would be the user that's requiring the parking.
Okay. And how does the, how does that requirement get transferred from the developer who's building the project to the end-user?
Typically, for, if there's a, we have a certificate occupancy process. When someone's looking at changing occupancy, then that would be reviewed, and we'd look at their parking requirements and any other requirements, and they would be notified before they'd occupy the building.
Is there a time limit on this, or is it indefinitely?
It would be, it would be indefinitely, and it'd be based on the specific use. It's like, say, a, say, a building has, it's, currently today, say, you've got a furniture store, and your parking requirements are based on one per four hundred. Furniture store goes away, and Hy-Vee buys the store, or another retail operator. They'd be required to put that additional parking in, because their requirement is one per two hundred instead of one per four hundred.
Okay, and then after they put that additional twenty percent in, do they now have to show an additional twenty percent somewhere just in case a need arises again?
No.
Okay. And do we have criteria to decide when, what triggers when that additional twenty percent of parking has to actually come in?
That'd be a determination that'd be done by the zoning administrator. We can certainly add specific criteria. Say, if there's a... You could find out that they're required to provide a parking study that shows what the percentage of use is, and say, if it's ninety percent or eighty percent, they don't have to provide it. If it ends up being that they're, provide a study and their, their peak demand exceeds what's permitted, then... So we, we can certainly add specific criteria, but right now, it would be under the zoning administrators.
Example would be the heaviest shopping season at the mall, or the Target, or whatever. Parking lot may be full over the holiday season, but that's a short period of the overall year.
We wouldn't intend to require it because of that.
Okay, so I, I think a criteria would probably make sense on that area. On the actual ordinance itself, well, yeah. General provisions, except in the ag preservation zone, a vehicle may be parked only on a street or alley, or in a properly-surfaced parking facility. Vehicles may be parked on grass or outside parking facility, flood emergencies, et cetera, business rushes. I gotta ask, it, is it legal to wash and wax my car on my front yard on a beautiful summer day with a, with a beard in my hand?
I would say yes.
Okay, it's not allowed in our code?
I mean, we would look at it as the vehicle, I mean, you're using it if you're out there, and... We could, we can certainly add a classification that would say vehicles parked on grass for specific, for washing purposes are exempt from this provision. But certainly, my determination would be that if you've got, if there's a hose out in a bucket and you're washing your car, makes sense that that's not a violation. But if the car's just left there, and...
Right, permanent parking spot, or...
Yeah, there's, there's dirt tracks leading to that spot that would imply that...
I get it, taking the engine out in the front yard on the grass or something, I get it.
Yep.
Item C, expansion of existing uses. Any existing use or structure which is altered or enlarged must comply with the provisions of this subchapter. That means if you, I read that to say if you get a permit and have somebody put new windows in your house, you've altered the structure, you now have to comply with this.
We would look at the, that specific language would be if there are, like, the adding on to a store or a change in occupancy, or that would be what we'd look at. We wouldn't, we wouldn't look at changing windows to triggering the parking. That's not, I, that wouldn't stand up in court.
This doesn't really say that it applies to just commercial. It's basically saying existing use. So any, any existing use, it says, any.
Mr. Thompson is the motion.
Mr. Mayor, just so we're clear, what Councilman Layman is referring to is already in the code.
That's correct.
This is not new language.
That is not new language, no.
So...
So if you put windows in your house, you now have to blacktop your parking spaces?
No.
We, we wouldn't require that.
What I'm suggesting is, staff has been used to administering these provisions that you're referring to, because they're in the existing code. They're not new, they're not changing anything.
Right, and we're making it so much user-friendly, right? So when I read it, I want to know, black and white, what it is I'm reading. I want to know that putting windows in my house is not changing my structure to a standard that I have to apply to all these other things. That's kind of what I'm looking for. You know, if we're gonna do this, let's do it so everybody understands it, and that they can wash their car.
Well, this is a, to the subchapter, it has to go to off-street parking.
Well, and then we get, I'm getting to that one. Here we go. Let's see, required off-street parking facilities located outside of required setbacks shall be provided for at least two vehicles for all single-family dwellings. There's many single-family dwellings that don't have that capability right now in Old Shakopee, so I don't know how we're gonna deal with that.
They're, they're legal non-conforming uses.
Unless they get windows put in their house.
No, that, we wouldn't require that.
All right. And then the, the confusing part about that is later on, it says you have to have a minimum of two. And if you're gonna have more than two, you can have up to twenty percent more than two. Let me see if I can find that. Yeah, that would be on page...
You're reading right off the resolution. Oh, you were.
Well, I think the whole thing is, isn't it? It's pretty long. Page five.
The intent is for that to apply to commercial and multifamily projects, not to single-family residential.
Okay, so in page five, item E, maximum number of spaces, this is commercial, right? Page five, page five, section E, maximum number of spaces. The amount of off-street parking for any use must not exceed the minimum required off-street parking spaces by more than twenty percent. So if I want to have three spaces in my backyard, by my garage, and I'm a single-family house, I can only, my minimum is two. This is saying I can, I can only have more by twenty percent, which would be two and a fifth.
We could specifically clarify that single-family residential uses or anything, spaces, spaces that are under, required spaces under ten spaces are exempt from that requirement.
Okay, so let's do that. And then the bicycle provision, there's one more provision in here saying if there's damage done to a property of a hundred thousand dollars or more, that you're required to do... Let's see, that would be page six, um, number, below number eight.
Second paragraph.
Yeah, it's kind of in the middle of the second paragraph, I guess. All new buildings and buildings that are remodeled, renovated, added on to, or altered by a building permit with a construction value greater than a hundred thousand are required to comply with a bicycle parking requirement. Obviously, if you have a house fire and they come in and fix up your house...
That's for, this is for commercial, it's not for residential.
So we need to clarify that again. And then we're saying that residential has to have blacktop or concrete parking?
Mayor Mars, Counselor Layman, that's correct. Outside of the ag, ag zone and rural residential zone, that's correct.
What sense does it make for me to have my blacktop driveway draining on to the city's mud alley?
The goal would be reducing the, reducing the amount of runoff of unpaved areas.
Well, paved areas run off faster than unpaved areas.
We're, the goal is reducing the amount of gravel getting into the storm sewer, and...
Well, you should probably do something with your alley then, don't you think?
We're working on that.
Okay. So I, I'm opposed to that. I, I think class five has worked very well. And to me, it almost looks like we're trying to say that we want you to either blacktop it or put concrete in, because it's gonna up the value on your property, and then we can collect more taxes from you.
I don't think that's the purpose of this.
Well, it doesn't make any sense to, to have water run faster right into a storm sewer than it does to seep into the ground and get cleaned, filtered naturally.
Steve?
Mayor and council members, this, this initiative is not an initiative necessarily that's generated by Shakopee. It's metro-wide, it's part of our permitting requirements, kind of like these unfunded mandates from the MPCA as part of the Clean Water Act. We have to, we have to abide by these initiatives. And this initiative specifically, it reduces the pollution into the downstream water bodies. There's a couple of examples around town. Go by the bus garage and look on the pavement. Look at the amount of gravel that washes on to this pavement, and then directly into the city's storm sewer system, which washes, which washes directly into the Minnesota River. And I get it, Minnesota River upstream is dirty. And as it passes through Shakopee, it's dirty. But we are required to do our fair share of trying to clean up the Minnesota River and all the water bodies. So this, this is one of those initiative that it's all about water quality. And it, it does help reduce the turbidity and the sediments that do accumulate in, in all of our water bodies. And this is, when you look around the city and all of the investment in stormwater ponds, that's what this is about. It's stormwater ponds, and all of these BMPs are about volume control, rate control, and settling out those sediments that are in the stormwater. So if we don't do one of these initiatives, we might as well abandon ship on any dredging of ponds, because this, this is one of those things that we're just required to do. So I appreciate your consideration, and with all those overlying dictated requirements from the Clean Water Act and from the MPCA and the watershed districts and all of those other bodies above, above the city of Shakopee.
Do you'd rather have petroleum distills running straight into the river?
Mayor and council members, it's not necessarily what, what I would rather have. It's, it's about some proven and, you know, proven ways and means to help settle out those sediments. And when it comes to petroleum, they're, they're, they're a little different, you know, as far as a gravel surface or a paved surface. I haven't really looked at any studies to see, do petroleum get in quicker and faster on a, from a concrete surface? You know, they, they don't...
I'm sorry, but when, when you wash the grandkids playing in a sandbox, or you as yourself with your kids playing in a sandbox, dirt is not bad. Dirt is not a bad thing. The riverbanks are made out of dirt. I mean, the water is moving at thirty miles an hour, scraping the dirt off the banks of the river. This is normal and natural. To say that a pebble getting into the river is bad for the environment is just purely nonsense.
So Mayor and council members, this, this isn't me talking. This is, this is all the experts around the world that says those sediments are a bad thing in your public waters. So I, I respect and understand your comment. It, it is hard to grasp it when you look at the Minnesota River, and it's dirty, and there's dirt banks, and I, I understand all of that, but, but it is, and it is an initiative, and it is, it is a pollutant that water bodies go on a list, on a federal list of being impaired by these sediments. So it's, it's an impairment. When they become impaired, the city and all of the other bodies are required to fix those impairments. So it is something we, we must fix.
We must fix.
Counselor Lewis?
Something we must make worse.
Is there any credit given for onsite infiltration of parking systems in residential areas? Say someone didn't want to go blacktop or concrete, wanted to stay class five, being more green than blacktop or concrete, and they had an onsite filtration? Is there anything in the codes or anything coming down the pipe that either of you know of that's gonna be allowed?
Mayor and council member Lewis, the infiltration part is actually a different standard, and it's, it's about retaining the water onsite. So there's, there's not a, there's not a correlation or connection or credit, if you will, that is given for that. It is, it's a separate requirement to infiltrate the water and keep it onsite, abstract it onsite, and don't let that water leave the site. But it's not necessarily connected or a credit given because of a gravel surface necessarily. So no.
Do we allow on, holding ponds in residential?
Mayor and council members, we absolutely allow it. We have them all over the city, and we continue to build them as part of every single development.
On private property and a residential private property?
We, we do, and we have a lot of drainage and utility easements over those type of holding and sediment ponds.
Counselor Lewis, follow-up?
I just wanted to go to one of Counselor Layman's questions there, where structure is altered or enlarged. Can we just remove the altered? That way, his question of putting new doors or windows in will be eliminated? Just if they're enlarged, then you would have to go to the different statutes?
Mayor Mars, Counselor Lewis, I believe what, I believe his point was for specifically residential properties. Now, the requirements we can specify, there, there's classifications for commercial. Now, as far as the hundred thousand, the hundred thousand dollar standard, or the, the section that you're talking about, that would be saying if you're doing an alteration on a building, say, an alteration or addition on the store, and it exceeds a hundred thousand dollars, then you'd have to put in a... then you'd have to put in a bike rack. If you're not doing that, then you don't have to worry about it.
The one I was referring to was his original question on 151.141, uh, item C. Expansion of existing uses, any existing used structure which is altered or enlarged must come, comply with the provisions of this subchapter, if we just eliminate altered...
That's in, that's in the commercial section.
You just need to clarify that, that's commercial.
Yeah, Mayor and council, we just need to clarify that's commercial, I think all of the points that Councilmember Lehman made prior to the one about the driveway concerned commercial.
More?
Councilor, uh, Whiting?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I like the ideas of some of the, the commercial and retail spaces, uh, reducing and adding where needed, um, those work for me. Where I'm having problems is, um, with the residential area, and I understand that there's water quality issues, but there's also a lot of older homes with residents that don't have a lot of money, and we're, we're looking to require pavements or asphalt and driveways where we haven't in the past.
And if they exist today, they wouldn't be required to change it?
They wouldn't be required, even if there is, they were altering that house.
Not if they're altering the house, if they wanted to, say, add a parking space off the alley that they don't have today, then it would have to be paved.
Okay, the other concerns I have are with, uh, RV parking, and, uh, a lot of folks do have RVs, they have trailers, um, shrinking the size down, you know, folks have bought and paid for these RVs and trailers, um, they use them as their type of recreation and many uses. A lot of folks have other trailers onsite too, uh, multiple trailers. Uh, my concern is that the, we've allowed 35 feet for a travel trailer, now we're shrinking it down. Well, people might have, you know, 35-foot trailer, 33-foot trailer or something like that, now we're saying those aren't allowed, or they have to be set back 15 feet from the property line. When they are, so we're, we're asking to have them pay more to store that vehicle when, you know, it's property owner rights situation here, they own that property, they have a place to put that RV, I have a problem with changing that on them all of a sudden, so I...
And if I may, uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, uh, we probably get more complaints on RV storage than just about anything, because although your property rights are involved, and I certainly understand that, uh, sometimes, I mean, property rights in and of themselves aren't absolute, and sometimes those impinge upon your neighbors. And, uh, when you're, you're parking your RV in a particular area, uh, it, it can be considered to be an eyesore, it can be considered to be blocking the view of your neighbors, and, uh, uh, you know, we certainly are, tho, those are the types of things that we were thinking about when we were looking at this, certainly understand your concerns as well, but it's a balance. And what we're trying to do is achieve some type of a balance with that.
Well, full disclosure, my RV that I parked there six months out of the year would be now illegally parked on my own property, but I've saved money for to, to buy this RV, I even saved my, more money years before to put in the proper, you know, concrete driveway to park it on. There's a lot of folks in the R1C in the lower part of town that have RVs, um, we're asking them to pay more to have that stored, and, uh, you know, along with some of the other requirements for some of the, the driveways and the, adding that parking space, um, having to have it paved, uh, I have concerns about this, um, so I would propose we leave it at the 35-foot as it was, so that things don't, uh, people all of a sudden are not in compliance.
Councilor Lehman?
I absolutely agree, it basically comes down to somebody's perception, somebody doesn't like the looks of something, well, you know what, what next, I don't like black cars, let's outlaw black cars.
Right.
I mean, really, if, you buy a piece of property, it's your number one asset, you, you bust your back...
Hope it increases in value.
Well, in my case, I wish it would go down in value, but you, you bust your back and you buy a camper because you want to relax once in a while, and you're punished for it, that's, that's, I, that's not the American dream, it's just not.
Now, if I may add, I do agree that they should not be parked on the streets. Now, our city staff is just finally getting into a point where they can start enforcing some of those codes, now we're adding another code that we're going to have to be going around. Um, I think we should be enforcing the ones that we do have already on the books, rather than creating more issues that are just going to have a, and if, if we table this, I can probably fill this room with 100 people with torches and pitchforks, so that is a concern of mine.
If you look around at other communities though, you know, it's a quality of life thing, we're 42,000 and, you know, here in our community, and I, I look at what we were when we were 10, 15,000, more of a rules community, uh, we've grown up here, and is it, is it a, you know, 10 feet makes a big difference, I think if you went to Eden Prairie, you couldn't park your 35, 40-foot RV in, on your side yard. I don't think you can in Burnsville, I don't think you can in Prior Lake. I just mentioned a couple cities, I don't, it just in general, communities are saying, you know, that's fine, you can own a recreational vehicle or a 40-foot utility trailer, but you can't have it on your property, you're going to make some sort of accommodations for that. I have a 38-foot trailer, um, but it, but I don't bring it home during the winter. Do I pay for that? Absolutely.
Well, I don't have mine in the winter either, but many people do. And, uh, you know, the concern is there are a lot of areas in town that are under, you know, the homeowners association's covenants that say you can't have that, people have signed those, they, they've already agreed to that, now we're coming back and saying, no, we're going to make you a paved driveway and we're going to make you a, a movie trailer.
The unfunded mandates we didn't like in the metro city stuff, we're, we're doing exactly the same thing we say we don't like, we're sending unfunded mandates down to our residents, and we're even going a step further, saying you can't park your personal belongings on your personal property. It's like, it's crazy stuff here.
Well, if you don't like it, I mean, strike it, I mean, what we're trying to do is to find, uh, what, what is acceptable to this body and, and, uh, uh, you know, the whole purpose is, is to bring in front and have a discussion, I don't think it's crazy, I think there, everything that we put in front of you is reasonable for discussion purposes, and then ultimately you, as the body, have to make the determination as to whether it's what you want. You know, I, I, that's, that's part of the process and, uh, and, and if you don't like it at all, we can also take it back and totally rework it, but, uh, uh, the point is, is that, uh, until we bring it in front of you and have this discussion, we don't know that as staff.
I don't mean to sound that this is, you know, it, it's kind of personal for me, but I don't mean to berate, because the ideas in here are well thought out, and, and there are issues that, uh, we didn't, you know, water quality issues, things that we haven't all looked at, but, uh, some of these I think are going to be, I, I'd move to strike on some of these items.
Councilor Malko, do you want to weigh in?
I think it's a balance, I think that, um, I, I, I agree with the, the personal property piece, but I, I think there is a balance, I think there is, um, a reasoning for, you know, some of the smaller, you know, uh, lengths of some of the trailers, but whether we want to go to that step right now is maybe what I'm hearing as a body is saying, no, I don't think we're ready yet, we're not there yet. But I think in, in a few years, that might be a different conversation to have. And, but I do believe that on this commercial side, that we really, and this is something that I've talked about too, is we, we have so much parking space that is unutilized, and I think that that piece of this does have to change. So, I mean, that's where I, I think that we could have a little bit of a balance here is figuring out what we want to do on the residential versus the commercial instead of having it all encompassing in this one ordinance, I, I think that's where everybody's kind of, they're in, they're in pieces right now.
The length of RVs can certainly be adjusted, currently it's 35 feet, we could revert back to that, so, that's something that council wants to do.
I would offer that, uh, as an amendment to any motion or, we can do it here about...
We don't have a motion on the table.
There's, there needs to be a lot of, uh, things clarified in here, this is commercial, this is not resident, you know, I think we've laid out a whole lot of discussion that could probably go back for some revision and bring back again.
I, I think, excuse me, Mayor, I think that's what I was trying to say is, I, I think that part of this is, is not just discussion, but I think it's also breaking it out into residential and commercial, I think we're getting, um, we're reading this and then, oh no, that's commercial, or, oh no, that's, that only applies to residential, we're, trying to encompass it into one ordinance is, is almost confusing us to that point, um, so that, that's why I kind of said that, that I think that there's pieces of this that we'd probably be okay with, but because it's so wrapped up in the residential and the commercial, then it, it becomes, kind of muddies the waters there.
Um, Councilor Whiting?
Kind of like we did with the tables, we made that pretty clear to, to read and see, um, pretty transparent, um, so I agree with you, I like a lot of the commercial, I don't think there's anything in the commercial part of this in the, in, uh, retail setting that I have a problem with. Mr. Lehman wants to, you know, clarify some of those points, and I think that's easy enough, but maybe we can look for that agreement.
So, the, the two rubs that I'm seeing here are the RV and the pervious, impervious surface for driveways. So I think we've got a good sense on the RVs, uh, if we can kind of just get an idea from everyone on the impervious, pervious piece, we can then, uh, craft some language for that as well.
There's a third piece, that was just clarifications of what applies to what zoning.
Sure, yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do that, um, but just that impervious, pervious, uh, piece on, on the driveways, if we can kind of...
If I can...
Just to clar, just to clarify for, uh, referring to the residential driveways, existing gravel driveways would be allowed to remain as gravel, if someone's looking at building a new home or, uh, adding on to their driveway, then it would have to be paved under the current proposed amendment, so they would be allowed to stay that way.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, and, you know, I, I think on this parking thing, I, you know, I know people park on their front lawns, and they're not washing their car, right, and they, that's their extra spot, and I, you know, I, I struggle with that as a community, I struggle that with, uh, you know, groundwater, um, aspect of it over the long term, we all think that, you know, oh, if it drops a little bit of oil, just a little bit, you, you do that through a community for a long time, you might have a problem, but, um, I agree, Councilor Lewis?
Do you ever see a drop of oil in a pail of water and see how it spreads? Yeah, that one drop goes a long way.
If, if I could try and, Mr. Mayor?
Councilor?
Yeah, thank you, uh, I agree with the, the recreational vehicles that are motorhomes and have an engine in them, those should be parked on an impervious surface. Trailers, I think are separate, I don't, I don't see it need, the need...
There's nothing hazardous to leak, even the antifreeze is, you can drink this stuff, you know?
So we're talking about the RV length, impervious surface, um, trailer...
Clarification of, clarification zoning. Yep.
Of residential versus commercial? I mean, I think there's a, I think our community can benefit from, I think we all agree from some of this stuff, um, if we can get it down to three or four points and work that. Did you have another comment? Councilor, uh, Whiting?
Is there any, uh, time crunch on this item?
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor Mars, Councilor Whiting, there's nothing, nothing specific, um, there's no pending development proposals for the Coles parking lot or anything like that, um, certainly we can, we can come back in a later meeting.
Do we want to make motion to table until...
Yeah, do you have enough direction? I mean, I think some of these are, a couple are, the clarification seems like a housekeeping thing. The RV length, I, I, you know, I think we all kind of struggle with that, some, I just think that some of these RVs sit in those spots, they're big RVs and they never move. I want to buy them, because I go, well, if you're not going to use it, I will. You know, it's for recreational, but they sit in these yards and on the side yard setbacks for, for, they, I never see them, see them move.
I think proof of ownership on the property is, is not a bad idea, that they're not storing somebody else's, you know, um...
That's a requirement today, so...
Right, so I don't have a problem with that either, so...
So I'd offer a motion to table this item until amendments and adjustments can be made by staff.
Second.
I have a motion on second to table for their discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, motion passes, thank you. Moving ahead, 10B3, comprehensive plan amendment for mixed-use, uh, classification.
Joe, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So yes, we will be reviewing a comprehensive plan amendment for the mixed-use land use classification, this will be a text amendment, um, for this mixed-use land use. So why changes are needed now, so the maximum allowed density in the city today is 28 dwellings per acre, and so the changes, um, today would be proposing kind of a final discrepancy between, um, the still enacted comprehensive, 2030 comprehensive plan and a recent development proposals that we have seen in the downtown area, namely the city hall site and the riverfront site. Um, and so those projects have pretty much been completely approved by the city, um, with the overheight structures and various approvals by this body, um, over the last couple of months, and this kind of would be the last step into, um, getting these properties ready for redevelopment. And so why this is needed here and, and with the 28 dwellings per acres, because lots within downtown area are generally unique from, um, most of the rest of the city, and they're generally much smaller, for instance, the city hall site is, uh, two-thirds of an acre, um, and so these standards would require just different standards than the rest of the city, so, uh, at that 28 units per acre, the, uh, city hall site would be allowed up to 17 units, um, and in our conversation with various developers, um, 17 units at that site would probably not be financially feasible for private development. And so the proposed projects, um, in the downtown are going to have more density than was currently permitted anywhere in the city, um, but that should really be put in a context with some of the other projects that we have, um, under construction today, the sand company projects out of South Bridge is, uh, 100 units, it's just on a larger lot, um, same with the Hy-Vee apartments, um, on Veerling Avenue, again, over 100 units on a larger lot, and, um, the BHS, um, so multiple projects in the city have, um, the same size, the same amount of units, just they happen to be on larger lots, and so they can fit this current, um, maximum dwelling units that we allow in the city today. And another issue that has came up with the mixed-use land use classification, it has no defined density limits for itself in the 2030 comprehensive plan, rather it says to refer back to, um, density limits for zoned properties with residential zoning districts, since most, uh, since all properties within the downtown area do not have a residential zoning classification, they're all guided on B3 downtown business, they technically do not have any, um, residential density allotments for them, and these discrepancies have, um, come to the attention of the Met Council, and they have, um, informed us that without these discrepancies being, um, fixed, that they would not be, um, preventing any of these projects with sewer permits to go forward as they are today. So next, uh, ta, uh, next page here is, um, just the table of what the land use table looks like in the 2030 comprehensive plan, um, previously as, um, under residential, um, under residential land uses, mixed use was included in there, um, but, uh, aside from the other land uses, it was not actually given a density level, um, applicable density level, and so that was, um, and the previously it said not, not applicable, not applicable, that would be changed then to, um, the new proposed dwelling density for the mixed-use land use classification, which would be up to 125 units. And so this would cover these new projects, uh, being proposed in the city, the city hall site would be up, would be 122 dwelling units, uh, per acre, that's about 80 units on that, uh, three, uh, two, two-thirds parcel, and then the riverfront project would be, um, 90, about 96 dwelling units per acre, and that would be about 125 units on about 1.25 acres. And a caveat that will be included in the language with this comprehensive plan amendment is that these, um, these density requirement, uh, density allowing thresholds for mixed use would only be allowed on parcels also zoned for B3, um, so this would very, very much, um, shrink the amount of parcels that this, um, comprehensive plan amendment would be applicable to, there'll be a map later on to show you exactly what those parcels would look like. And so the next, uh, slide is just the, uh, language that is proposed to be amended within the comprehensive plan, um, so there... proposed to be amended within the comprehensive plan. Um, so there is no language, um, looking to be removed from the comprehensive plan as, um, the downtown district land use plan and the mixed-use category really does a good job explaining what the city is looking for in the downtown area. It just never went, um, the next step of saying how much, uh, what that level of, um, development should look like, or how could it look like. It kind of stopped short of that and left that, um, and left that up for interpretation. This would kind of solidify what that, what that numbers look, what the number's going to look like, and kind of, um, and also why that number should be where it is, um, today. So, this next slide is just showing, um, kind of the concentrated nature of this comprehensive plan amendment. Um, so there are a lot more parcels that are guided mixed use, um, but, and that would be a concern of city staff as well, to have all those parcels be allowed up to 125 units per acre. So, adding this caveat, the saying you must also be zoned, um, for B3, kind of really, um, limits the amount of parcels which would be affected. So, a total of 34 parcels in the downtown area comprising of 10.4 acres would be affected by this change. And again, this would cover, um, the new proposed developments and also would in fact bring existing developments that have been built in the city previously into conformance with our comprehensive plan. As you can see, I have marked on here, um, 200 Levy Drive, which is constructed, um, a men, a few decades ago, and that actually is at 66 dwelling units an acre. So technically, with our own comprehensive plan, is not in conformance. Um, same for Northridge Court. Northridge Court's at 46 dwelling units an acre, and again, that would not be in compliance with our comprehensive plan. And, uh, in fact, River City Center as well. Um, so we actually wouldn't go above the 28 units per acre, but since it's guided mixed use technically today, it has no land, um, density threshold, so that is also in, um, conflict with our current comprehensive plan. And also, the other parcels which would be affected by this change, um, are either historic storefronts that would see no development pressure for various other reasons, the Shakopee Library, or other parcels that say they're already, um, developed. So, this is, um, a very concentrated, um, comprehensive plan to kind of make sure that these projects get past that last hurdle to, um, finally be, uh, ready for construction, hopefully in the spring.
Are you, Joe, are you saying that the, the existing, three existing sites, or at least residential sites here, the Levy Drive, Northridge, and are not in compliance?
Mayor and council members, that is correct.
Okay.
They were, I do not know the history of them, and I'm not sure why, in the previous comprehensive plan, they were not addressed, but that...
Didn't bother the Met Council then, did it? And now they want us to comply now?
Um, Mayor and council members, we have had conversations with the Met Council, and they have informed us that previous staff had approved these, and they were, they were approved incorrectly, um, in the past. Um, so, that is both a error on our part and on their part as well. So, this is kind of fixing those past errors and kind of getting all this stuff in conformance, ready for the new, um, comprehensive plan to be adopted next spring and to let these projects finally get ready to go forward. Planning Commission had a chance to review this comprehensive plan amendment at their previous November hearing, and on a vote of seven to zero, uh, recommended the City Council approve Resolution, Resolution R2018-133, and staff also recommends that the City Council approve Resolution R208-113, comprehensive plan amendment for a text amendment to the mixed-use land use classification and move its adoption. With that, I will take questions.
Uh, questions of staff? Questions of Counselor Lehman?
Why is, uh, the library shown on this map?
Um, Mayor and Counselor Lehman, the library was just pointed on the map to show that was a city-owned parcel. Um, if there's any questions about, uh, what was there, how development could happen there, it's owned by the, it's owned by the city, it's operated as a library, and it would have no demo, development pressure at any point in the foreseeable future.
Well, on top of it, it says parcels, parcels subject to text amendment to increase allowable densities. So, that, that top line tells me that the, the green ones here are, are all eligible for the comp plan amendment that you're requesting.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Lehman, um, that is true. Um, so that property is zoned B3 and guided mixed use in the 2030 comprehensive plan today. So, just by it being with those two, um, criteria, that it would also be subject to the density increment, increasing. But again, there would be no development pressure on that.
Well, how come the other B3 properties right next to, well, Bill's Togery, right next to City Hall, why is that one not included? That's B3.
Not mixed use.
Michael?
Mayor and council, so there's two issues we're looking at here. So, the green parcels are currently in the comprehensive plan, zoned B3, and also guided for mixed use. These are the only parcels that meet that definition. So, Bill's Togery is actually guided for commercial use, so it would not qualify. So, the library, for whatever reason, in the current comprehensive plan, is guided for mixed use, and it also happens to be zoned B3.
Well, shouldn't we be guiding that for institution?
Mayor and council, there is no guiding for institution in, in no category. We had this issue on the...
Shows up on the comp plan.
So, the long and short lecture that we received from the Met Council is that comp plan comes first, zoning comes after. So, your zoning needs to match the comp plan. So, any parcel currently that is B3 and guided for mixed use, this would qualify for, based on a lengthy discussion with them.
To get everything in compliance?
Yes, sir.
As a comp plan amendment?
So, as, as part of the 2040 plan, I believe the library will no longer be mixed use, it's a different classification. But under the 2030 plan, which is what you're amending, these are the qualified parcels that match the mixed-use zoning, or mixed-use guiding and B3.
So then we would come back and rezone then, to match the...
We, it'll be re-guided as part of the 2040.
Right.
The zoning won't change.
The zoning won't change, okay. Counselor Lehman?
But the mixed use o, was an overlay over B3. It wasn't actually an official comprehensive plan amendment with a definition. It was a council overlay saying, in these areas, over top of these, uh, uses, which was actually included some other commercial along the corridor too, some B1 stuff.
Yeah, and this is 2030 comprehensive plan.
Yep.
These are the only parcels that are
B3.
Mixed use and B3. So, there's a lot other parcels in the 2030 comprehensive plan that are
One-on-one.
Guided for mixed use.
But what I'm saying is that it wasn't a guiding, it was an overlay on top of the existing underlying guiding.
I respectfully disagree, council member. There is a...
I was there, I was there when we did it, so...
So, the comprehensive plan
Yeah.
Has a large area of mixed-use guiding, period. It has underlying zoning, which is different. These are the parcels that have comprehensive guiding, mixed use, and are also zoned B3. So, currently, in the current code, B3, the density under the zoning side is unlimited except by FAR. Under the comprehensive side, it's limited to 28 units an acre.
Under the R4, it would be limited to 40, because it's in a downtown area.
That would, Mayor and council, that would be wrong. So,
Why would that be wrong?
While you created an R4 zone, you never amended the comprehensive plan to create the R4 zone. So, we've been going individually, project by project, and amending those sites. So, the Sand Company site had to have a comprehensive plan amendment.
Yep.
The, um, uh, MWF site had to have a comprehensive plan amendment. The, uh, BHS site had to have a comprehensive plan amendment. The Hy-V site had to have a comprehensive plan amendment. So, when you go through all of those, there's been no global R4, because R4 does not exist in the comprehensive plan.
And they...
We've been literally going around and around with the Met Council for months on this, and so you'll notice the table that Mr. Whiting showed you shows no R4 classification. And you'll see, it says not applicable for, um, mixed use. And so, our interpretation would be not applicable means the density goes, falls back to B3. That was not their interpretation.
So, for, to bring the couple, three or four existing projects into compliance, we need to do this. To get the two other projects that we've basically approved off the ground, we need to do this. And is this will satisfy the Met Council, and rather than individual parcels like we have done, we're kind of doing it in a holistic effort here downtown?
Mayor and council, this was their recommendation. We sent them the text. They have agreed with this text. Um, they were surprised that other projects have occurred in the city and not gone through the Met Council process, and they brought back the 200 Levy Drive, Northridge Court. Those never went through, never received certificates. They did get sewer somehow. They are operating much differently these days, and they had requested that those properties be brought into compliance so that they can have their sewer into compliance.
So, to do this, or for the discussion, we have to follow these criteria here for a comp plan amendment. And then, is a Met Council going to have a problem with, uh, with our discussion on our criteria?
Mayor and council, uh, as I said, we have sent this to their staff. They reviewed it and approved it. Um, if you remember, they originally had a hard stop, I believe it was September 30th, because this issue has now arisen in just about every city. And the new staff there is kind of abiding strictly by their regulations. There are numerous cities that are having to do these
I've seen a lot of that.
What we call rapid text amendments. And so they've extended the deadline, particularly because of this, that 30-day notice goes out, and we have until December 31st to submit comments from the 30-day notice and the new text amendments. And they will accept them and approve them.
Counselor Lehman?
So, question, since you have other areas on this corridor that are mixed use, and you have areas, three different areas in the 2040 comp plan update that are called mixed use, what do all of them mixed uses become, as far as the density?
So, Mayor and council, the only density that changes today is the parcels that are highlighted in green.
Well, that's not what I asked you.
Yeah, let's, uh, let's do this, I know where you're going.
Because...
To the east...
Otherwise, you're going to have to have mixed use one, mixed use two, mixed use three, mixed use four.
It goes by the B3, different zones.
So, so Mayor and council, this was, the 2040 plans in review are to bring back additional comments we've gotten and suggested changes. For the 2030 comp plan, to get the densities for existing projects and the proposed projects in the B3 zone, this is what the Met Council has requested of us. So, this just deals with the parcels highlighting green, nothing else.
Counselor Whiting?
Uh, we've talked about these projects for quite a while. I don't see any of these other ones that aren't already higher density creating any issues. So, I'll offer to motion to approve Resolution R2018-133, a resolution for a comprehensive plan amendment to the mixed-use land use classification and move its adoption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, um, discussion. Counselor Lehman?
Why don't we just, why don't you just re-guide the two properties that are considered for development?
We have to bring the, the, uh, th, three of these that aren't even in compliance.
So, we said, we asked out of the Met Council, and since we have pro, property that's currently out of compliance, which would be, um, 200 Levy Drive, Northridge Court, and depending on how you count the ownership of River City Center, that's kind of up in the air, they said. They said, why don't you just bring all this stuff at once and come up with a solution that doesn't make the whole downtown and all the mixed-use area that's a logical and defensible use. So, that's why we went with those properties that are guided mixed use and also zoned B3. So, we did not open the Pandora's Box.
This is a single family house.
And they, absolutely, we would have had to have several different categories, which don't exist currently in the comp plan.
Counselor Lewis?
Being this is a comp plan amendment, is this super majority, I take it?
Yes.
Okay.
Further discussion? Um, Counselor Lewis?
I'm going to have an unusual request, and I will hope you bear with me. Um, we have the two incumbent, I guess, I don't know, not incumbent, but, um, the two members that will be taking two of our seats in attendance. I guess I'd like to question them as to how they would vote, just out of curiosity, because...
They stand as residents
That...
Until January.
Yeah, you can't do that. I, I, I'm just curious on how they would vote, because I, I just think that, uh...
Mayor, one of them's on the planning commission in this past seven zeros, so...
What I'm looking at is if it doesn't pass now, it's going to take, what, six months or better before they start accepting again?
Call the question.
Mayor and council, depending on where you all end up in the final comp plan, it'll be July or August of next year.
Question's been called.
And these projects won't move forward until...
Call the question.
I, yep, I offered a little latitude there, but, uh, thank you. The question's been called for a comprehensive plan amendment, text amendment for mixed-use land classification in the B3. Um, by roll call, Laurie, can you call that?
Councilman, Councilman Lewis?
No.
Councilman Lehman?
No.
Mayor Mars?
No.
Councilman Whiting?
Aye.
Councilman Moco?
Aye.
Okay, motion fails. Mr. Thompson, do we need explanation on our no votes?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, it's, it's not required. This is a staff request.
All right.
It's not required.
All right, moving ahead then to, um, 10B4, zoning text amendment to the revised city code. And Joe, welcome.
Good evening again, Mayor and council members. All right, tonight we'll be reviewing the side ordinance revision. We had a workshop for this back in August, and now it is back for final, um, decision. So, just before we get into any changes from the workshops, just a little refresher on why we are doing this today. So, in 2015, uh, the Supreme Court made a landmark decision in how they regulate signage. It kind of altered how all courts since and have been reviewing signage and their validity with the Constitution. So, in that case, Reed versus Town and Gilbert, uh, the Supreme Court ruled against the Town and Gilbert sign ordinance, and ruled that it was unconstitutional, and it violated the free speech clause of the First Amendment and the equal protection clause of the Fourteenth Amendment, as it implicitly regulated, uh, some signs differently based on their content. Um, in the case of Towns', uh, in the case of the Towns ordinance, they pulled, um, they placed different levels of, uh, of regulation on signs based on the, on the people putting the signs in. So, there, the moving church that was putting signs down, and the city was pulling those up, but not taking out signs of other users. They took that to court, and they lost in court. Um, so, once they lost this in court, their sign ordinance was ruled null and void, and they were required to quickly recreate a new sign ordinance. So, the idea here, um, today would be to avoid that kind of fate, and also to, um, address, so address those legal issues, also address clarity and ease of use issues for residents and staff. It's kind of a theme that has come up for the day, and it is true for the sign ordinance. So, some issues with the existing ordinance. Um, it doesn't define the city's interest for regulation signage fully. It provides, uh, two sentences at the beginning, um, defining its interest in regulation. Um, a lot of, most of the cities in the country have much more thorough definitions and, and, um, reasoning why they're defining signs, as of course it does relate directly to the First Amendment and Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution. Some areas of the current sign ordinance regulates based on content. Um, a specific example would be, there is a clause that would regulate against any offensive signs being placed on any property in the city, and doesn't really identify what offensive means. So, it could be a very, uh, subjective review process for that. It applies special privileges. Um, certain language in the code, um, seems to have been crafted to serve single users, single legacy users, and they've kind of still existed today, and can only really be applicable to one single user, and that would be an issue with, um, equal, equal protection. Uh, the sign adjustment process, um, has criteria that is explicitly not required to be passed by the Board of Adjustment Appeals. And again, if one case was denied and one was approved, that could be an issue for, um, any sort of legal challenges. Temporary signage is another issue. Um, there's a lot of different caveats in the current ordinance that, um, specifically regulate for various types of temporary signs, and what they say, and how they, uh, say it, and they give them different, um, different ways they can, different places they can be put, dif, how long they can be put up. Again, that would be another issue with equal protection. Um, another issue that came to light recently is, uh, the current sign ordinance has not set illumination standards for signage lighting. So, generally, um, so there is a exterior lighting regulation in the city code, but generally signage lighting is, um, different than regular exterior lighting. Um, signage lighting, lighting is shooting out at you whether you're driving or walking, whereas exterior lighting is generally down or in, um, and not directly affecting traffic or pedestrians walking. So, it's, it'd be important to set different, uh, more specific standards for signage. Um, the overlay districts for signage requirements, um, in the city have created prob- The overlay districts for signage requirements in the city have created problems. They have created areas of lack of regulation period. There are some highway business parcels in the city which currently have no signage standards because there is no highway business specific standards in the code, and they're not covered by the overlays. And so these overlays have become an issue since this code was passed previously because there has been rezonings, namely the High V, which was rezoned to highway business and was not then covered by this, these overlays. These overlays were not, have not been updated to match different zonings, and they also, when they were first envisioned, didn't cover all of the zones. In addition to that, the agriculture preservation zone today also has no set standards for signage. So if you were, if you lived in an agricultural preservation lot, technically you could do whatever you want with signage because there's no regulations period in the code. And finally, there's confusing language in many areas of the code. It's split up into sections, and these sections will explicitly state, this section is for commercial districts plus business park districts, and then list different standards. And then within that, within that piece, it'll have provisions for all districts, namely the sign adjustment process is within a single district's code requirements, and so is the PUD process. So that just can be confusing for anyone looking through the sign code and looking for certain things and not finding them. There's other issues with language, namely there are, again, speaking of these regulations for certain overlay districts are repeated and redundant through different sections when giving different standards for these different similar or same overlay districts. And so really, we're looking to just kind of eliminate all this confusion and all this roundabout redundancies in the existing sign ordinance, kind of make it simpler again for residents to use and staff to interpret for residents as well. So the revised ordinance generally is going, it completely revises the existing ordinance, keeping aspects from the existing ordinance that were, staff determined were useful, not necessarily unconstitutional or had any sort of legal issues. It defines purpose more thoroughly, it changes two sentences into five or six paragraphs, just so there's more reasoning why the city is doing what they're doing. Simplifies language and ordinance, again eliminates the overlay districts. So it returns regulation of signage back to the zone that the property is zoned. That was previously what had existed for the city for as long as the sign code existed and it was amended a few years ago. And so then you're not regulating certain areas based on location or use, you regulate it on a consistent basis, and that's consistent basis is you're in one zone, you have the same standards. It simplifies language for temporary signage. Again, in the existing code, there is temporary signage standards for different kinds of signs and for different times of day, and for all these different, different things for temporary signage. Rather, we're looking to just say, if, say you have a home and you want to put a sign in front of your yard, you can do that now. Previously, you could not do that. Again, it revises those sections that were just confusing. We now have one section for residential districts, one section for commercial districts, one section for industrial districts. So if you have a commercial property, you know where to look. If you have a residential property, you know where to look, rather than having to look through different sections at random sometimes. It generally follows the existing size and height standards that are in effect today, with one caveat being that lowers the allowable size for wall signage in the highway business zone. So previous, or the current exact, act ordinance would allow for 10% of a wall area to be signage for any structure within the highway business zone. And for, say, for Target, for example, that would allow them roughly 1,200 square feet for signage, which seems excessive. So that has been lowered a little bit, or a lot, and now kind of right size for what's actually needed. It creates a new category for highway signs, so being cognizant of the fact that we are reducing some signage allowable size standards for businesses and do, knowing that some businesses do advertise to passing motorists that are moving at high speeds, we've created this new category for highway signs. So this will allow businesses, say Target on 169, to put signage oriented towards a highway that's larger than will be allowed otherwise. So this is a way to kind of bring back the overlay, bring in the spirit of the overlay districts, which were meant to be, you know, one, one overlay district was meant for highway business areas, one was meant for more local commercial areas. This kind of brings that spirit back, saying if, you know, you're on a highway, you're obviously advertising your motorists moving at fast speeds, you probably will need larger signs, so you still can do that, just maybe not to the extent you could previously. It raises the review for signs exceeding standards to a variance. So variance is something that nearly every city in the country uses for signage, for if you want to have, have sign bigger than what's allowed by code. And again, it brings a consistent criteria that an applicant needs to meet for passage, and there's no room for, well, they didn't meet this criteria, but it still passed. They did, and they, you know, there's no, there's no room. It's, you had to meet the criteria and you have to, period. It creates sign illumination standards, so staff reviewed best practices around the country about what best for illumination of signage would be appropriate for the area and included that in the sign code now specifically for sign lighting. And again, it's based upon national level best practice. The Municipal Lawyers Association, after the Supreme Court decision in 2015, created a draft for cities around the country to use, to kind of use as a skeleton to build their own codes that will not have any problems infringing upon constitutional rights. The reaction to the revised sign ordinance, overall reception has been positive. The Chamber of Commerce has been, and we've met with them multiple times, and they've seen every draft of this, and they've been generally, they've been in support throughout the process, not really offering much comments or criticisms. They, they generally are supportive of this. Planning Commission, again, has discussed these changes at their October workshop and recommended approval at six to nothing. And again, we've had two workshops, the Planning Commission and City Council. So I'm going to address some of those changes from the workshop. So generally, the big, big picture has remained the same, but certain small issues that were pointed out by the City Council and Planning Commission have been, have been addressed. So there've been some small definition changes. So some definitions weren't clear enough, and those have been tweaked and tightened to be more clear about what they're defining in the definition section. Temporary signage has, has been further refined, so it no longer specifies a number of signs that you would be allowed on your property, just a total size allotment, so that would be 32 square feet. Previously, at the, at the workshop, it was three signs up to four square feet apiece, but that seemed arbitrary. And so this one, if you want to have more smaller signs, you could. If you want to have less larger signs, you could do that as well. It also, we also added language describing when temporary sign permit is required, so previously there wasn't language stating that, but now there is. Free signing, sign regulations have been altered. Will, so responding to comments at the workshop, council, we will be allowing signage in building setbacks on the first rep that was not allowed. Now they'd just be required a 10-foot, 10-feet from the property lines, as is today. There's been some language changes, removed bench signs. That was pointed out as an issue that could be allowing signs within the right-of-way, and if we're not going to be allowing signs in the right-of-way, we have to be consistent about that. So bench signs were removed. Added a maintenance clause, so this was brought up about certain area identification signs or signs for common purposes, whether that be a subdivision, a neighborhood, a business park. Sometimes they can fall into disrepair, and if they're, you know, decades old, there might not be any documentation saying who is still maintaining this sign or should be maintaining this sign. So a clause has been added to, at the time of application for an area ID sign, a common area sign, that the applicant needs to state who is going to be responsible for maintaining the sign in the future. And so if it does fall into disrepair, staff has someone to contact to rectify that. Also, there's a, we've been added that government users will be required to follow the zoning sign code. Previously, that was not, and that was an issue, and I agree, and so that has been added, that if you're a government building in a commercial business district, zoning district, you need to follow the commercial zoning district standards as anyone else would. There's been some height, size and height standards adjusted, so highway signs, the allowed height has been lowered to 40 feet and a setback increase to 20 feet. It was mentioned in the workshop how a large sign like that close to the property line could be an issue, and I, staff agreed and have made those changes. Wall signs, remove size limitations for non-front walls. Previously, non-front walls were going to be allowed smaller amount of signage, but that has been removed. And if you want to have your sign in the front or the back of the building, you can have the same sign if you'd like. And finally, freestanding signs, so in the major recreation district, freestanding sign heights have been lowered. That was another issue that was highlighted in the workshop. So Planning Commission, on a vote of six to zero, again, Planning Commission recommends the City Council approve ordinance O2018-019. And staff also recommends that ordinance O2018-019, revising city codes, section 151.185 through 151.200 be approved and moved for adoption. That, I will open up for questions.
Questions of Joe? Questions of staff? In regard to the sign? We did see Counselor Lehman?
Yeah, a question regarding to the lighting. I don't know what point three lumens is, but if my motion sensing security light with 250-watt bulbs goes off, am I in non-compliance?
Mayor and council member, so this is something that would be, this was meant to address certain problem lights. So if your light went off for five minutes, that would not be an issue. This would be only for permanent signage. So this would, your floodlight, if it went off, would be covered by exterior lighting code.
Okay. And then the front one by the front door, that's showing a property address? So that's, it's like lighting up what the address of the property is?
Counselor Lehman, correct, yeah. So again, that would be covered by exterior lighting.
I don't know how bright the single bulb is.
I'm sure it wouldn't be too bright, but it would be covered by exterior lighting.
Other questions of staff? I think the, the workshop that we had, where you had visual pictures of, try to create uniformity, I think for the highway business, that signs that are a little more, lettering is bigger, so you can read it. You know, I think that over the years, we've worked on the sign ordinance plenty...
Too many times.
But I also think, at the same time though, in our community, our sign ordinance has actually gotten better. It's more uniform, it's more consistent. I don't believe we get a lot of variances against the code, so I think that's kind of the test of a, of a good policy from that. So I like what I see.
Mayor, it's being changed because it doesn't...
Well, the, the Supreme Court...
It doesn't meet the letter of the Supreme Court law.
No, I understand that, but...
The Met Council weigh in on it, or? Mr. Mayor?
Other questions of staff? Counselor Whiting?
Could you turn back to the page where you had changes from the workshop? So on here, did you, we, we had talked about a lot of this stuff, but any significant changes that you want to point out that was kind of one of those aha moments that we may, may not have talked about at the workshop?
Mayor and council members, I have, there was, so generally, as I said, the main body of the drafts stayed pretty consistent. These smaller changes were kind of things pointed out by council members, and there was certainly some, namely bench signs, considering if we're gonna, if we, if we can, if we're not going to allow signs in the right-of-way, we need to be consistent. So allowing one caveat, then you can have, you know, you can open it up and have a million. And definitely in looking through some of the sign code, it seemed like it was another sort of patchwork. There were certainly things that existed that you could say, huh, okay, I know why that, I know why that's there.
Who that applies to, yeah.
Yeah. So that, and again, that would be an issue if someone else, say, wanted to do something and they did what this code said, but somewhere else, and we said no, then they could say, well, you said yes for them. So there's certainly, definitely, yeah.
Certainly, a lot of work has went into this, and we've spent a couple, well, spent the previous times looking at it, and then now again after the Supreme Court ruling. Thank you for all the work you've done.
I just, I would say I hope we don't come back again for this.
Counselor Mokel?
I, I know that I've been working on this for my five years on council and two years on the chamber board before that. So with that, I'm going to offer approve ordinance 02018-019, a proposed zoning text amendment to the city code, section 151.185 through 151.20200 signs.
Motion on the table. Counsel, Counselor Whiting, second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes three to two. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving forward then to our workshop, 10A, or 11A, excuse me, our 2019 awesome draft budget review. Darren?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Give me one second here.
Hey, aren't you going to fill out the hour? We're going to bill you back to 10 o'clock?
They've signed stuff, it's just happening now.
Fifteen minutes.
No offense to Darren. All right. Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm going to run through these slides pretty quickly tonight. We saw a lot of these back in September when we did the preliminary levy. Just kind of a refresher on some of those. It is a workshop setting, so we did distribute the budget to you earlier last week or the week before, on that end of it as well, too. So if you got questions throughout that budget document as well, too, that now is kind of the time to talk about those at this point in time. So just reviewing the budget quickly, this is the third consecutive year that staff is proposing a budget with no impact to residents, absent any above-average increases in property value changes. This budget decreases the tax rate from 37.9% down to 35.23%. These percentages are also inclusive of the EDA levy itself that was instituted back As I continue here, this is the, the third year of our budget transformation process, or 2018 was the third year of the budget transformation process that really set the councils, took into consideration the council's goals and really set those into place for low taxes, financial stability, and a stable tax rate. This 2019 budget builds off of those, off that foundation, and really focused on maintaining our current service levels. In 2018, we did a lot of right sizing the organization, we added some additional staff members. This 2019 budget is really maintaining the service levels that we currently have. Again, we want to, we are continuing to work on, on true fiscal transparency, including defining our revenues. Over the last couple of years, we've isolated our levies. In prior years, before my time, we had one levy coming out of the general fund, and then we would make transfers to different areas, to the EDA, to the capital improvement fund, for tax, even tax abatements and such like that. Now we, we, we have those isolated, we show those specifically in the budget, and we're not shifting money from one pocket to another, we're just showing explicitly where our money is coming from and what it's going to. We're also looking to ensure that our budget is accurate. We've been working hard to reduce any variances that we've had. We've had many discussions with the council about not overestimating or overinflating our budgets, but really trying to right-size those budgets with the notion that if we come up and there's a lunker of a snowstorm, then we gotta, and we have many of those throughout the year, we need to maybe have to come back to council for additional money for salt or for fuel or for overtime or something like, to that nature. So that's all been incorporated into this, this budget. Some of the budget impact issues for this year, we've talked about these before, but cost of living adjustments, we have our union, our union agreements in place for all three unions for 2019, and then our non-union wages as well, those are at a 3% cost of living. We did have a benefit this year on our health insurance. We saw basically a, a small decrease in our premium after experiencing a large increase in our premium last year. So we're kind of riding that roller coaster, and this 2019 year is a beneficial year, and then we were able to take advantage of some premium decreases. Police and fire pension contributions, there was an increase by the state legislature to increase the employee and the employer contributions for the, specifically police and fire pensions. And then also in, we talked about right sizing our organization last year with our 2018 budget. There is a need in our public works, streets division for an additional public works employee. That's a, a public works maintenance employee that is involved directly with streets and storm sewer and our sanitary sewer as well. So that's about a $38,000 adjustment to the general fund. The one nice thing about those, the public works maintenance employees, is they split their time amongst other funds, so the stormwater and the sanitary sewer fund pay for half of that employee as well, too, so. And then some other changes that we have affecting the budget for this year is that 2019, we won't have an election cost. 2018 was our election year, so we have some savings there. But on the flip side of that, we hired two additional police officers in 2018 that started in about September timeframe. So basically, they were partially funded in the 2018 budget. They'll be fully funded now for the entire year in 2019. Additionally, we talked about the internal rent charges on some of that long-term equipment, specifically like our plow trucks or our fire trucks and things like that, making sure that we're capturing the replacement value of those assets rather than the historical cost, because the price of those vehicles is escalating at a higher rate than, than we can afford to replace them at down the road. On the good end of things, we do have some strong revenue forecasts. We've been doing our monthly financial reports, and we've been seeing that our permits, our charges for services and recreation, and those such areas are exceeding kind of what our forecast were on that end of it, and that it allows us to actually reduce our levy. That plays into that, that factor of it. One other budget impact area is our EDA levy. EDA levy is a separate body or a separate levy that will take place and shows up on your, on your tax statement. We incorporated that in 2018 at a $350,000 levy. We're recommending, we had a preliminary recommendation of $350,000 again for 2019. The EDA does have statutory authority to levy up to .0183% of the, of the city's estimated market value, which does allow to levy up to about $834,000. Our recommendation is to keep that flat or keep that same as what it was in 2018 at that $350,000 level. And that's about a $20 impact on, on a resident that would have been implemented in 2018.
And just for clarification, Darren, that, when we broke that out, we did not increase that levy. We simply took that levy dollars from the general fund and isolated it so citizens could see what it was we were doing.
Correct, Mr. Reynolds. That's exactly what we did. So in the past, we talked about those transfers. We had taken $350,000 a year and moved over to the EDA for EDA operation activities. This then mainly moved that over to the EDA and basically reduced that general fund levy at that point in time to account for that. So it was, it was a, it was a wash. It wasn't an increase or a decrease, it was just isolating that for transparency purposes. So. And the nice thing about those EDA levies is that they apply to all properties. So if there's a property that's in a tax abatement or in a TIF, they still are applied to the EDA levy as well. They're applicable to that, so they have to pay that EDA tax. So here's just a quick overview of our levy. For 2019, it's $19,580,500 compared to our 2018 levy of $19,610,548, which is a tax decrease of just over $30,000 or .15%. So, and this does include that additional $350,000 levy. Just want to make sure I compare apples to apples, is that we're comparing total tax dollars as kind of the city of Shockley and the Shockley EDA from one year to the next.
So we're essentially collecting less dollars than we did the year before?
Correct. And here is a breakdown of that levy analysis.
From taxes. Doesn't mean you're not collecting more from other areas.
Well, I keep trying to get more money from you, Councilman Lehman, but you never give it.
So here's a breakdown of the, it's getting late, we'll keep you on track here. Here's a breakdown of that, of that, of our levy and comparing it to 2018. And here, we talk about that transparency piece. This exactly shows where the parts of the levy are going to. Obviously, a majority of it goes to the general fund, that's our general operations. We got some that goes towards abatement. We got the capital improvement fund itself. We got a couple hundred thousand dollars going there, and then our debt service, specific bonds and such like that. And then at the bottom is the EDA levy there for a total of that $19,580,000.
I have a, Darren, I have a question here.
Yes.
Reading the budget over the weekend, and so the, we're going to finish off the 2008 A improvement bonds, right?
Correct.
And then, do we have an opportunity in our next cycle for that 2010 A to get off as well?
You know, I think that does, I think there's only one or two more years left on that one. That might be, it's getting close where there's just a couple of years left on that. And really then, those debt service dollars get rolled into that 2016 abatement. So when we did that bond, when we issued that bond, the debt service payment bet, the repayment schedule, took into consideration these payoffs. So it keeps our debt service total levy about the same, that that $2.1 or $2.2 million. You won't see that decrease. It'll just stay pretty much flat, and any excess will go back into that, pay off that 2016 abatement bond. So looking at the levy requested and its impact, we saw 6.8% growth for taxes payable 2019. 16% of that growth is related to new growth. And that new growth is really what we're looking for, because that creates more of the pie. It doesn't increase the size of the pie, it just creates more pie. Well, it doesn't, it does increase the size of the pie, but it reduces then what existing property owners have to pay towards the levy. So this new growth created $634,000 of new tax capacity. So that's about 100, so that's about $225,000 of levy potentially, that the city could have increased our levy by that amount. It had no effect on taxpayers if values would all remain the same for all those other homeowner, or property owners. Obviously, there's changes in property values and whatnot, but everything stayed in status quo, and we added 16% new growth into there. We could have increased the levy by $225,000, and everybody's taxes would have stayed exactly the same. So due to this new growth and a decrease in the 2019 levy, so there's two pieces to that, a lot of our residents are going to see a tax cut. I think we got about 7,071 residents will see a tax cut from the city this year. Absent any changes in value, if your value stayed exactly the same, you'd see about a 7.2% decrease in your city taxes or about $62. That doesn't, absent any increases in value, there's a, values went up this year. So a lot of people saw increases in their values, but there are still a lot of people that saw, I think the average is about 5.3% or so is what our average value increase was. Even those residents will see a slight decrease in their, in their taxes. And here, I got a bullet on it. Anybody that their value went from 0 to 5% increase, we'll see about a 4.5% cut in their taxes or about $39. So even if your value did increase, you're still, you're still seeing a tax cut out there. And here's that, the chart that I know I showed you back in September as well, too, kind of that breakdown of property valuation classes. And we're seeing that some of those, kind of the more moderate priced homes, there's a high demand for those, and the prices are going up for those. So you can see that, you know, that $100,000 to $250,000, you know, the average in there is probably 7.5, 8% or so on what the value increase was on those homes, whereas some of the higher-end homes, the value increases were only in that, you know, 2.5% range or whatnot. In the entire city, it was 5.3% is what the average increase in value was for, for pay 19.
I got lucky, I was a 10 and a half.
And I should note that for pay 19, that value is actually as of January 1st, 2018. So you got that valuation notice back in March that told you what your tax, what your valuation was going to be as of January 1st, 2018. That was for your taxes payable now in 2019. Truth and taxation statements hit the mail or were delivered over the weekend, I believe. So unfortunately, at this point in time, now isn't the time that you can really contest your value, but it's that value that kind of plays into it with your taxes as well, too. So if your value went up 10%, you're probably seeing a little tax increase. But if your value stayed within that median of where everybody else's was, it should, it should be a little tax to cut, cut or about the same. So.
This slide particularly is only the city portion of our taxes, correct?
This is, yes. And that's all I'm going to talk about is the city portion. We don't have any control over the county taxes, the school taxes, you know, the Met Council, the special taxing districts, the mosquitoes.
Or the others.
You know, all the others, correct, other than the, the Shockley EDA.
mosquito control district.
Right. The mosquito control district's doing a good job tonight, I can tell you that. There's no, I haven't seen a mosquito all night. But as you can see on this slide, this really shows that those, those homes in those more modestly priced areas, there's a demand for those, and the prices are going up, which is driving the value up, which is shifting the proportion of piece of that pie to those, to those homeowners. Their taxes are actually increasing versus some of the other priced homes where their taxes are actually decreasing. And here's just a historical look at our tax levy over the last 10 or so years here. I think it averages about, about 2.76% over the last 10 years. So you can see that there's obviously some ups and downs and, and whatnot on that end of it. But to average 2.76 is pretty impressive. That's, I wouldn't say there's a lot of cities out there that average that for percentage on their levy. It's probably closer to probably 4% or more for a lot of cities out there over a 10-year span. And here's our tax capacity and tax rate comparison. Obviously, with our values and new value coming in at 6.8% increase, our values are increasing. That also helps drive down our tax rate, but also reducing the levy helps reduce the tax rate as well, too. So it's, they kind of work in conjunction with one another there. Here's our, a comparison of our comparable cities for the preliminary levies. These were the levies that were approved back in September. And these are comparable cities that we've been using as a benchmark for the last couple of years here. And as you can see, obviously, if we have a tax decrease of .15%, we're kind of the leader in, in the game at this end of it. And also like to do kind of a cost of services as well. So we look at, look at our utilities, look at our, our stormwater that we talked about earlier tonight, that fee that goes there, the sewer charges. I also include the water in here. Obviously, the Shockley Public Utilities handles the water, but for all these other cities, they have their own water as well. So that's kind of one bill that you get. So you kind of want to compare your taxes along with all those other city services and kind of see where the city lies. In here, I have projected the 2019 utility rates in there as well, too. We're looking at a, a small increase or an increase in the sewer rate. I know we've talked about the stormwater will stay flat, but this also looks at kind of where we're at. And we're sitting in that bottom third of, of these comparable cities and, and sitting in a pretty good location at that as well, too. And this doesn't take into consideration any utility increases for the other cities for 2019. Nope, wrong way. And then here is our general fund, just high-level summary budget. It breaks it down by, by function, general government, public safety, public works, recreation, and then our different categories of revenues as well, too. You can see we have a, we're balancing our budget for this year. We do have a revised budget in here as well for 2018. Obviously, with our revenues being as strong as they were, we have adjusted those numbers upward to reflect the, we're actually going to come in at. We'll probably come in at actually above those as far as revenues are concerned. But right now, we're projecting about a $590,000 surplus at the, at the end of 2018. So. And then within your budget, it's just not all general fund as well. So we, we passed the, approved the capital improvement plan earlier this year. All those 2019 projects are brought into this document as well. So we have all the different funds in here. We have the EDA fund itself that we talked about. We have the debt service funds. We got the capital project funds that includes the capital improvement fund, the park reserve fund, and all our enterprise funds, such as the, the sanitary sewer and the storm drainage refuse, and then all, all of our internal service funds as well, too, the equipment, park and recreation assets, et cetera. So, so those are all included in your budget document there. So it's an inclusive document of all of our funds that we budget for within the city. So our next steps, on December 4th, the EDA, since typically only meet at the first meeting in the month, we will request the EDA to approve the EDA budget at that meeting. The city council will then approve that EDA budget at its, at the second meeting in December. That's also our public meeting is December 4th, so that'll be, have the opportunity for the public to comment on the budget itself. And then also, we're looking at our fee schedule for 2018 to come forward, I believe, in the first meeting in December, which obviously impacts the budget as well, too, since our budget is derived off of potential changes or increases or changes in the fee schedule for 2019. I should say the 2019 fee schedule is tentatively coming forward. And then this final meeting in December, the council will approve the final budget and levy at that point in time. So, so with that, that's my brief. It's as brief as I can go. And then, but I'm sure willing to answer any questions you have on specific departments or, my directors are here as well, too, if they got any questions on any specific pages or funds or departments. So.
No. Great job to Darren and staff. That's how I feel. I must not have been on the 7,100 people, though, for the tax cut, so. But, oh, well. Comments, questions of staff? Or comments?
Nope.
Yeah, good.
Thank you.
More?
Thank you. No, we've looked at this a few times. We've done a great job putting this together and keeping those numbers down. As always, if there's that big snowstorm, we need all that salt or whatever.
Sunday.
Could happen. So that's still 2018, so we're still good.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. All right, before us, 12A, city bill list for our review. 12B, liaison administration reports. Councilmember Lehman?
The 169 corridor coalition had its full board meeting. I briefed you on what was coming out of the executive board, and the one piece that they did actually approve, I'm the treasurer on the executive side. So at the full board meeting, they approved a two-year reduction of dues to member cities. So you're probably looking at about half dues for two years. Some savings there for you, too, so.
We need to revise the budget?
No, I mean, what's our dues? I think they're like $3,000 for cities of our size to that organization. So 1,500 bucks a year for two years, that's, you know, 50% savings two years in a row. That's, you know, we basically looked at it from the standpoint of what our expenses are and what our revenue was and what they're spending on. And, I mean, they're still doing things that are good. One of the things that they're talking about now, if anybody's free in February, they don't nail down a date. It's either going to be... I have a 19 map. It was the 5th or the 20, 20th, I believe, is a Wednesday in February of 19. 169 issues at the Capitol, setting up a room and all that stuff up there, so I'll be going to that. But if anybody's interested and want to join me, we'll go up and say hi to Brad Tabke. Bend his arm a little bit.
Knock on his door.
Yeah.
We need some fixing on 169.
Exactly. That's all I have there.
I have no liaison report. Councilwoman Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday, we met with the downtown group. They're planning their event, as we talked about earlier in the meeting, and the fireworks and the, and the street closures and things like that.
Parade.
The parade. Just want to bring, mention that coming up here, and that'll be November 30th, that's a Friday. And parade starts, I think, at 6:00, isn't that what it was? So come down, enjoy the, the tree lighting and all the festivities. All downtown will have something going on here and there. Great for the kids, fireworks. So that went on. Last Thursday, I met with the county canvassing board, counted the votes. Of course, we drew for the ones that they had to hand count. And of course, we pulled like some, three of the biggest precincts in, in the, in the county. So hope you had fun with that. I could not, not P10, not, it was P10. But, oh, well. But thanks for all the work they did again. That's part of the process, and we got the votes counted.
All right, thank you. Culture call?
I had spuck last night. On the water side, they just had a few punch list items left for the year, and reported that the winterization has gone really well. On the electric side, they had three outages since the last meeting. Two of those were in Prior Lake that affected 126 customers for 46 minutes due to an old cable. The other one was in Windermere Township, it was, was a squirrel for 45 minutes and two customers. They did install a temp line for the Duran project, and they ended up having to switch Amazon over to another circuit until that is finished. So that is all they have. So that is all they have.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Reynolds, our administrative report.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just one thing, happy to, to bring to your attention that we received both of our applications to the Scott County CDA grants were granted. One is a 2019 corridor readiness grant for the 16969 West End UA, excuse me, AUAR project, which you're aware of, and that's for $95,000. And then we received a $30,000 for the technical assistance grant for the Scott County Innovation Center, which is our, our partnership that we're looking to do with a, a local community college. So both of those have been funded, and once again, my hat goes off to Chief Tate, who convinced me that we needed to have a grant writer on staff. I disagreed initially, and once again, I was wrong.
Well, that's great, that grant money from the county, that's super. Councilor Lehman, number 13, other business.
I have no other business, Mayor.
All right, and item number 14, cultural whiting.
Is that only for you?
It was specifically for cultural, but go ahead.
No, I want to, first of all, you know, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving that's coming up. There is a couple of sites, if you're sitting at home and have no place to go for Thanksgiving, Shakopee VFW is holding a free Thanksgiving dinner, there's also a free Thanksgiving dinner at St. John's Church in Chaska, not the St. John's in Shakopee, but a couple places, go enjoy Thanksgiving, that's all I have.
Very nice. Wish everybody, all our residents, happy and safe Thanksgiving to all, and peace on earth. I would entertain a motion. Councilor Whiting?
Move to adjourn to December 4th, 2018 at 7:00 PM.
Second. I have a motion, a second by Councilor Lewis. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned at 11:11.